All right, good afternoon, everyone. We have a full house here at our city council chambers. My understanding we have a large number of people downstairs as well. Thank you all for taking the time to be here for today's October 21st, 2015 formal meeting of the city council. We're going to begin today's meeting with an invocation. Today's invocation will be provided by Dr. Joswant Sagdev from the Spiritual Sikh Community of Phoenix. If you can, please stand for invocation.
Oh, power that be, we offer this prayer to you. By your grace, we are blessed with soul and body. You are the mother and you are the father. We are your children. You are the provider of all the comforts and peace in the world. No one knows your limits, for you are the highest of the highs. Oh, source of being, we all pray here today before the start of this meeting of Phoenix City Council to seek blessings for its representatives, so that they may make decisions that lead to creation of ideal community, where all citizens of this great city could enjoy peace and are able to achieve a great personal and community progress and success. Nannik Nam, Chardikala, Tere Pane, Sarbadh Bala, seeking the upliftment and well-being of all under your will in the name of Nannik. Why Guruji Ka Khalsa, Why Guruji Ki Fadhe.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sagdev. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Bill Gates. Brokaw, Councilman DeCecio, Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Gates.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Valenzuela.
Mayor Stanton.
Here. We have an interpreter with us today, Ms. Marquez. Could you please introduce yourself for the audience?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Letizia Marquez. Si alguien necesita ayuda o asistencia para traducir al español, por favor véame. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda will be citizen comments. According to the city council rules, we'll have up to 15 minutes of citizen comments at this time in the meeting. If there are too many people to speak or their time goes too long, we'll finish the citizen comments at the end of today's city council meeting. Our first speaker is Kim Baker. Mr. Baker, are you here? You have up to three minutes. Good to see you again. Will the city clerk please grab the information from Mr. Baker?
Thank you, for each council member. I want to thank you, mayor, city council members, for this opportunity once again. I don't know why there are those that choose to give my concerns less measure than they deserve, and I'm not here to argue that. However, I am here to make it known that I find some cowards on your police department, in your police department. I come to you guys publicly and I speak, and I'm transparent with you, I'm open with you. You know, I'm comfortable with calling Arizona Selma, Arizona now, Selma, Arizona. We are falling so far off the map in being leaders, and we embrace officers who choose to harass citizens. What you think you know about me, please scratch that, because the truth will be revealed. Mr. Mayor, I authored a letter, I hope you got a copy of it. What you have today is a subpoena given to one of your officers in 2012. This is the probative value that gives rise to why Officer Sullivan left your police department. Why this officer was at Priest and Baseline, clear out of his jurisdiction following me, is still yet to be answered. I don't come because I like this, I come because it's a serious issue. I could be a statistic right now, under the ground. However, I chose to be above reproach and not give this officer an opportunity to do me any harm. Once again, I'm here today, I ask for the resignation of the police chief based on the lies and the omissions that he has chosen to take as it relates to my investigation. And I'm asking for an ally on this council to hear me with your heart. The city manager, city attorney, you know, you guys really need to do a gut check, because I know he didn't author that by himself. Once again, Mr. Mayor, I'm here to ask you do your job. I heard you are people's mayor, and I come and share my concerns with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baker. Our next speaker will be Diane Barker.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, Diane Barker. I'm in District 7, and I'll start out. It's nice to see that we have the citizens a part of the formal agenda. However, I'd like to make a recommendation, have staff get back to me. On the publication, not only on the internet, but also in this document, table contents is missing the invocation minutes. The minutes are there, the invocation, the pledge, and the citizen comments. So if you're looking to come to this meeting, you won't be able to see that. You will find that somehow back in the body, okay? The other thing, on the internet, it just listed these activities as activities, not citizen comments. So I think our city, I always try to do a better job, I always find that, you know, I can do that, and I'd like to have you do that, too. Today I got to speak at a finance and sustainability meeting, and I wanted to share with you that "Meet Me Downtown" is really a good thing, and Danny Valenzuela, councilman, knows about that, is Fit Phoenix. It's going to have a birthday in November, and what happens, anybody can come downtown around 5:00. We go to the corner, we walk, we jog around town, and the summer we find, you know, where there is air conditioning. We go over even and work out inside a building for kickboxing. Then we come back and there are free raffle tickets, and I won $50 gift certificate for running shoes, you know, and I got a hat for being there 25 times. It's a great way to meet people. Tomorrow, Fit Phoenix will be at Food Day, and it's going to be over here at Caesar Chavez from 10:00 to 2:00. The mayor will probably be there, great apple crunch, everybody gets that at noon. So there's a lot happening downtown, but as I say, we always can do better. With the city staff on the non-dust proof, our friend John is trying to get that resolved. I hope the mayor, the manager will accept the proposal Friday that was put in on this. But in regards to that particular neighborhood services and zoning, I'm wanting the city council to adopt their ethics, and on here there's a recommendation that the zoning hearing officers are not volunteer attorneys, not volunteer land attorneys, and they need to follow any attorney, the Arizona Bar rules, and it's recommended we go back and pay the hearing officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Mr. Leonard Clark is next. Up to three minutes.
Thank you, mayor. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm a citizen of Phoenix, and I want to thank you for letting me speak, and I want to thank all of the soldiers who are serving right now overseas and in our country to basically defend our freedom, because I would not be allowed to be here to speak right now if it wasn't for them and the people that have come before me, and some who'll never come here. Thank you to my fellow veterans. But I just wanted to state, there are some controversial things going on, and I want to thank you for trying to govern in your best efforts. I realize it is harder to govern than it is, and it's easier to criticize. I do realize that. But I must say, I am troubled by the fact that, I've been very sympathetic to our law enforcement, but one of the things that I'm troubled by is not necessarily the police, because I'm not going to be put in this box, police against the people, because I really think that's not the case. I think it's politicians, maybe not you, who make these divisions among us. We should have had dash cams, we should have had body cameras, we should have had all of these items in place, not only to protect the people of Phoenix, but to protect the brave officers who defend the citizens. This would eliminate much of the controversy. But instead, we've gone along a controversial route, where you're going to carve out $16 million, and I understand, our brave officers put their lives on the line, but why not defend them also from accusations by having dash cams, by having body cameras? Many police chiefs say a lot of that would have stopped right there. So I'm asking you, please, immediately, emergency-wise, you can do it, get those dash cams. We are one of the only major cities in the country that does not have that. Let's protect our people, let's protect our officers. So I'm not going to go into that box, bad person against police, police against, no, that's not the way it's going to be. Secondly, I'm asking you to please personally boycott, there's a meeting that's going on, and I know this is controversial and radical, but as a Phoenix citizen, I don't feel that as public servants, you should go to this. But there's a public event going on October 30th in our own Phoenix Convention Center, where some government officials are speaking. One official who has approved a treaty to desecrate the land of our Apache brothers and sisters, it's called Oak Flat, they're bringing in a foreign corporation, and they, one of the Democratic people and Republicans are going to desecrate Apache land, and this lady in the Democratic Party is going to speak October 30th from 4:30 to 8:30 at our Phoenix Convention Center. The Apache president, the Apache people are pleading with you, do not let this impending crime against humanity occur, and that is Resolution Trust Copper is coming to our state from a foreign country to desecrate our land at Oak Flat, to poison our water after President Eisenhower said, "No more, we shall not do this to you anymore." But once again, we've broken our promise, you can be a start to stop that. You can finally say, "Oh, poor Native Americans, you know, that's their plight." No, you can make Phoenix and Arizona not be of the year 1915, but of the year 2015. I thank you again for letting me speak, and freedom isn't free, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Rusnick, did you write testimony up to three minutes?
My name is John Rusnick. I speak quite frequently, but what I got here is a deal that was put on, the form that they have down at Neighborhood Services telling about what's going wrong. They got it in here, that there was some problems that they had back in January. Here it is, 10 months, nothing's happened. I talked to Bonita about two weeks ago, maybe three. I asked her, "What about these violations?" This is a violation that comes with this form of if you have a violation on a home. I've got pictures here of all the things that are violating. I've also have a picture here, and also it tells what the violation is. What I'm saying is, if Bonita's going to lie to me, and Dreezy's going to lie to me about what's going, he told me the same thing that Bonita said, everything is just fine. Alan Stevenson and Chris Hallett, I talked to Chris Hallett at last meeting here, and he said everything is fine, everything is wonderful. What I want you to do is I want you to read, I even highlighted it, so you have it right in front of you, just read what it pertains to the property. It's right here, black and white. Read it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rusnick. Annette Moreno is the next speaker, and then she'll have up to three minutes, and that'll be our final speaker for now. We'll get to the regular order of business for the formal meeting, and then additional citizen comments will happen at the end of the meeting. Ms. Moreno, good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Valenzuela, and council members. My name is Annette Moreno, I'm with the Pendergast Elementary School District, located in the West Valley, District 5. My purpose today is just to share some information with you with our district. The Pendergast School District covers over 20 square miles and serves the communities of Phoenix, Glendale, and Avondale. We provide excellent educational opportunities for approximately 10,000 preschool through 8th grade students on 12 of our campuses. The superintendent is Dr. Lily Matos de Blue, and she is a true believer and an excellent leader. Our vision is empowering excellence and success, and our mission is to provide quality education for all students, so they can equally compete with their peers globally for their future endeavors and aspirations. The district offers signature programs including dual language, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, otherwise known as STEAM, architecture and design, energy and the environment, medical and health services. Additionally, the schools offer programs including Leader in SRP, School of Energy, Agula, I'm sorry, Agula Youth Leadership and College Bound Program, Technology Integration, the Experienced Corps Intergenerational Tutoring Program, and the Leader in ME program. Every school has a strong focus on teaching the whole child and engaging families and the community to ensure high student achievement and lifelong success. We have several programs coming up that may interest you and the Phoenix community. We hold a monthly parent luncheon, it's free and open to the community. This month's topic is on brain development and activities and making you smarter. It's presented by Lulu Rood and the team of educators from First Things First. It will be held tomorrow from 11:00 to noon at the Pendergast Community Center, which is located at 10550 West Mariposa in Phoenix. To RSVP, please contact Kerry Polmeyer at 623-772-2206. We are also having a STEAM Academy Open House from 7:00 to, I'm sorry, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on October 29th at the Desert Mirage School located at 8605 West Maryland Avenue. Please come and interact with the students and technology, see your future, and meet the scientists, doctors, architects, and thinkers who will make life better for all of us. We also hold a monthly community cabinet breakfast, which is also free and open to the public. It's a great opportunity to network with other organizations and businesses and connect with the Pendergast family. Our next meeting will be held on November 3rd, Tuesday, from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. at the Pendergast Learning Center, which is located at 3841 North 91st Avenue. And our focus will be on honoring our fire and police departments. To RSVP, please call Sylvia Binion at the district office, 623-772-2200. And on November 3rd, the Pendergast Elementary School District will have a maintenance and operations override on the election ballot. Information about the M&amp;O override can be found on our district website at www.pesd92.org. Please exercise your civic duty and vote on November 3rd. We have many more events, and you can find all of our wonderful events on our website. And we look forward to seeing you. And also, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. Thank you for your time today.
All right, good, you're on message, you got it all in there. I really appreciate you coming down, and make sure you give a special invite to the vice mayor on that program about making you smarter. Just joking, thank you, we love, we appreciate Pendergast. All right. Next item on the agenda.
See what I have to deal with?
Next item on the agenda. City clerk, please read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordances number G5753, G6041, G6060, and G6065 through G6069, S42071 through S42101, and resolutions number 21361 through 21365.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Williams, have you had a chance to review the meeting minutes of the special meeting September 2nd, 2015?
I have a move approval.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have a motion as it relates to mayor's boards and commission nominations?
Move approval of mayor's boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. How about city council boards and commission nominations?
Motion to approve city council boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We have a large number of members of the public who are here to be sworn in, so they can provide service to the citizens of Phoenix. I'll come down to my right, your left, and swear in these excellent citizens. Afterwards, would you please come behind the dais, and the members of the council would like to greet you and say thanks in advance for your service to our community. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
State of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
The women's commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. You're official, thanks for your service. (applause) All right, thanks in advance for your service. Next on the agenda, liquor license applications. Vice mayor, do we have an omnibus on liquor license applications?
Yes, mayor. Motion to approve items 1 through 30, except for items 11, 12, 19, 21, and 27 through 30.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a few cards on those items, but all in favor. Any comments by members of this council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those pass unanimously. Item number 11 is in District 5, Grand Canyon University Golf Course. Councilman Valenzuela, vice mayor, do you have a motion on item number 11?
Motion, motion to approve item 11.
Second.
And we have a card on 12 as well. May I see that? Leonard, is it okay if we take 11 and 12 together? You want to make comments on both of them? Is that all right?
Yes, mayor, thank you.
Okay, we want to add the motion, add 12 to the motion.
Thank you.
Motion to approve items 11 and 12.
Yes, for the Grand Canyon University Hotel and Golf Course.
Yes.
Liquor license?
Yes.
I mean, I do love the great things that Grand Canyon University is doing, even though we are afraid a little bit of some of the, how fast they're growing and how they seem to be taking over part of the city, but hey, it could be worse. It could be Al Capone taking over the city, but anyways, I'm just saying, I find it kind of comical that, and I love my brothers and sisters at Grand Canyon University, but I just find it kind of comical, they're applying for a liquor license, you know, they are Baptist, I mean, if Baptist affiliated, maybe not anymore, they'll correct me, I'm sure. I was raised Southern Baptist, not anymore. But liquor and Baptist, you know, I just, that seems kind of strange, so.
Yeah.
I'm for it, let the Baptists drink all the liquor they want on their golf courses and their hotels, but I just think it's kind of funny. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leonard Clark. It does kind of remind me when we had to approve a liquor license for a fundraiser for the Kidney Foundation a few years back. It happens. All right, so we have a motion in favor of 11 and 12, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is item number 19. Councilman Noakowski, we have one card by Mr. Clark on item number 19. Do you want to make a motion on that one?
A motion to approve.
A motion, a second. Leonard Clark, this is on the post number one, American Legion Special Event Liquor License for that post.
Thank you, mayor. My name is Leonard Clark. Thank you, city council. I'm sorry for speaking so many times here, but the American Legion, even though part of the DAV, I still, the good work that the American Legion does for my fellow veterans is, I hear great stories, they really help out, so I really strongly hope you will approve this liquor license for my brothers and sisters at the American Legion, they really help my fellow veterans. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion in favor, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 21, do we have a card on 21? Councilman Noakowski, this is in your district, we have one speaker, Thomas Aguilara. You want to motion first, you want to hear the, from the speaker first? Mr. Aguilara, you have testimony on item number 21, Wingstop.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members. I've been in contact with Councilmember Noakowski's staff, Felicita Mendoza. I've also been in contact via email and one phone call relative to the protesters. I spoke with Amy Conroy, she actually lives right behind the Wingstop. Her concern was expressed that there's like a common area in the back where we don't, we, meaning my client, Wingstop, doesn't serve alcohol, but she wants to make sure that, you know, that if we post a sign that says "No Alcohol Beyond This Point," that we enforce it and we mean it, and I can pretty much assure all the neighbors that this Wingstop, which you've also approved one of them today, and you've approved a few of them most recently, and hopefully many more in the next year, we plan on some exponential growth here in Phoenix. Takes it pretty seriously that pretty much it's just beer, just to let you know, it's not alcohol or distilled spirits. We serve very little wine, frankly, it's just some beer with wings, and it's taken pretty seriously. All the staff is trained, entitled for, and they have me a phone call away, I've been practicing liquor license law for 20 years here, so I feel like we've got a pretty good handle on training and really enforcing where alcohol can be served and consumed and responsibly and served properly under the law. So I wanted to assure the protesters certainly that we'll be doing that. The bigger issue was, I screwed up. I put the Dunlap diagram in this particular app. We fixed it, we put the right diagram in with the state and with Ms. Archibald at the city of Phoenix. I don't like to admit to many mistakes, but this one happened, and we corrected it readily when the protesters pointed it out to us. Certainly was not malicious, was a mistake, and I'm sure my malpractice carry wouldn't like it, but it was an error on my part.
Well, thank you so much for being a good neighbor, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this liquor license.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Motion is second, I guess I'll turn to our staff, is, was the applicant admitted a mistake to put the wrong site plan? It's been fixed, and that is appropriate for us to move forward at this time?
Yes, mayor. My name is Denise Archibald with the City Clerk Department, and we did receive the amendment that was filed at the state, and the diagram is now correct, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, that will not be impediment to move forward today?
Mayor, no, it will not be.
Okay, so a motion, we have a second, any additional comments by members of this council? None of the protesters were here to give testimony here today? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. It passes unanimously. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Next item on the agenda is item 27. This is a recommendation for disapproval. This is in Councilman Gates' district. Councilman, we have Detective Eric Brendel here to provide testimony in opposition to the liquor license application. How do you wish to proceed?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if we could have a short presentation from Detective Brendel.
Okay. Detective Brendel, you would provide your reasons why Police Department is recommending opposition, disapproval of this liquor license. Thanks for coming down.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time allowing me to speak on this matter. Uh, Mr. Lopez is the sole applicant on a Series 12 restaurant license for the Most Wanted Taco Shop at 9822 North 7th Street. The Police Department recommends disapproval of this application based on the applicant's failure to meet the requirements set forth in ARS 4-203. Under the statute, a liquor license shall only be issued to an applicant who demonstrates a satisfactory showing that he is reliable, capable, and qualified to hold a liquor license. Um, in review of the liquor license, Mr. Lopez was found to have the following criminal background. In 2006, he pled guilty to a reduced charge of possession of marijuana. 2007, he pled guilty to domestic violence assault and domestic violence unlawful imprisonment. 2008, he pled guilty to reduced charge of unlawful use of means of transportation, and again, possession of marijuana. 2013, he had a warrant arrest for his failure to pay fines on a suspended driver's license. This year, he had an active, uh, arrest warrant for his failure to pay fines again on a suspended driver's license. In addition to his criminal background, Mr. Lopez has also shown inability to care, take care of his legal commitments in a timely manner. A liquor license is a privileged license, much like a driver's license. However, Mr. Lopez's Arizona driving privileges have been suspended for the past several years. The suspension is based on his repeated failure to appear in court for a number of infractions as well as his failure to pay for the associated fines. While the suspension can easily be rectified, Mr. Lopez instead continues to operate a vehicle while suspended and with knowing disregard for the law. On October 1st of this year, Mr. Lopez agreed to meet with investigators from Phoenix Police and Department of Liquor. On that day of the meeting, Mr. Lopez arrived to the police station, driving a vehicle while his driving privileges were suspended, along with his four-year-old daughter in the car. Additionally, there was an active arrest warrant for his failure to pay fines related to his suspended driver's license. As of today, his driver's license is still suspended nearly three weeks after his meeting with investigators. Based on the applicant's criminal history, as well as his failure to take care of his legal commitments in a timely manner, the granting of this liquor license would not be in the best interest of this community. For these reasons, Mr. Lopez has failed to demonstrate he's reliable, capable, and qualified.
Thank you very much, Detective. Councilman Gates, based upon that criminal history, do you have a recommendation as it relates to Most Wanted Taco Shop?
Yes, Mayor. Move disapproval.
All right, we have a motion for disapproval based upon the Police Department recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, Councilman?
No, I think the presentation speaks for itself.
All right, we have a motion for disapproval. Uh, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Pastor?
Yes.
Waring?
Williams?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes, so the motion for disapproval passed unanimously before the City Council. Thank you very much, Detective. Next item is item number 28, uh, in District 4, a, for, a proposed liquor license for Roxy Showgirls, and the staff recommendation is for disapproval. This is in Councilwoman Pastor's district. Councilwoman, we have, um, the attorney for the applicant who is here, and also Detective Brendel to testify as well. Do you wish to hear from them first or put a motion, hear from staff? How would you like to proceed?
My understanding is they're, they're requesting a continuance, so.
Yes, yes.
The applicant's requesting continuance?
Yes, we are. Uh, Mr. Cologne, who's the majority owner, his wife had to go in for unexpected surgery. Uh, they've been married for over 40 years. He would really like to be here to present his side of the story, Your Honor, and, uh, this is a pretty important thing to him. This is the first requested continuance. There were no protests, so there's not anybody that's really inconvenienced by having the short continuance, and he has met with the Neighborhood Association and agreed to certain stipulations that the Neighborhood Association requests.
Councilwoman Pastor, how would you like to proceed? You want to do motion to continue?
Sure.
Motion to continue. To what date? Is it next meeting?
The next.
It's the one after that, I believe, Your Honor.
Mayor, members of the council, the applicant is requesting to November 18th, 2015.
Okay. How does it do it relative to the state, the liquor department and hearings at the state?
We do have all of the forms required to be able to move it to that meeting.
Okay, is that, is that the motion, Councilman? Do we have a second on that? Detective Brendel, uh, did you wish to testify on the issue of the continuance? Is he still here?
Yes.
You, uh, the, the motion right now is to continue. I know you're opposed to the item. I don't know if you have any thoughts on the continuance itself. Are you okay with the continuance?
That's fine, sir.
Thank you very much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, that passes unanimously. We'll see you in a couple meetings.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item is item number 29, GNS Mini Market. Councilman Nowakowski, how do you wish to proceed?
I'd like to, um, make a motion to continue this item until November 18th.
Second.
A motion, we have a second. Uh, we have a representative of Phoenix Police Department here, Officer Valentine, so the, do you have any opposition to a continuance on it?
No.
Thank you very much. Uh, motion to continue, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number 30 is next, uh, in Councilwoman Gallego's district, TNA Cabaret. Uh, we have one card in opposition from Detective Westfall. Uh, you wish to put a motion on? You want to hear from staff and/or the police first? How do you wish to proceed?
Appreciate the detective's very hard work on this case. I would like to continue it to October 28th.
Oh, we have a motion to continue, uh, and a second. Detective Westfall, the motion is to continue. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next on the agenda are ordinances and resolutions and new business. Vice Mayor, are we ready with the omnibus motion on, on those items? Oh, it's been ruled. I apologize. I'm sorry. That's right, we're going to take certain, I'm sorry. Before we get to that, we're going to suspend the rules and we're going to take certain items, uh, out of order. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Uh, motion to suspend the rules.
Take, uh, I'm, I'm, sorry. 78.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, motion is to suspend the rules and take items 78, 86, and 87 out of order.
A motion, do we have, and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. So next we'll move on to item number 78 on the agenda. I think these are items in which we have a large number of people here to provide testimony. Item 78 is an appeal of an abandonment hearing officer decision as it relates to North 30th Drive and West Coulter Street. It's in District 5. My understanding is that there had, there was an agreement between both sides, uh, on this case as to how we would proceed with, uh, with testimony. Vice Mayor, you okay if we follow that, that recommendation? What I have is, uh, first, a staff presentation by our planning director, followed by Commander Kevin Robinson and/or Lieutenant Russ Frederson, followed by, from Cactus Park Precinct, followed by Stephen Earl, the attorney representing Grand Canyon University, and then hearing from, and he'll have up to 10 minutes of testimony, and then, uh, community would then have the opportunity to provide more full response. Uh, Jack and Bev Kaiser, five to, excuse me, uh, Jack Kaiser and Beverly would provide five or six minutes, uh, and then Gail Palmer and, and Gary Perkins Warner, five to six minutes total, uh, so that both sides get approximately the same amount of, uh, time. We'll try to keep it as even as possible. So that's the, uh, my understanding is that was agreed to, and that's what the Vice Mayor is recommending. So with that, can we get a staff presentation by Alan Stevenson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, we have to, I'm sorry, we have to do a public hearing. I'm sorry. So now I'm going to open the public hearing on this, uh, on this matter.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this is a appeal abandonment request for North 30th Drive and West Coulter Avenue. On the aerial over here, you see, uh, Coulter Avenue and then 30th Drive on here as well. This is a request that the abandonment hearing officer approved. Uh, Grand Canyon University's request to abandon those areas, subject to stipulations on July 15th as part of their campus expansion plans. You see in this aerial here, more close in of that exact area for the abandonment. Um, as part of that, there are two appeals that stand before you today, uh, one by two property owners who are located in the area. So you see, uh, the two property owners representing, uh, by Mr. Reese Anderson, uh, Gail Palmer, they own property right here, and then Coulter Commons is another property owner right here that's in the abandonment area. We did receive a letter from their attorney, uh, just a little bit before the council proceeding started, saying they are in support, uh, for the Coulter Commons one here as well. So the only owners inside the area are these ones here. You'll hear some testimony from, from them. The other appeal that's out there is by, uh, parts of larger parties that are concerned about access to, uh, Grand, Little Canyon Trail. Staff does recommend approval per the October 20th, 2015 memo from me. Uh, I would like to clarify a typographical error in that stipulation eight, where the language, uh, during the hours of operation should have been listed in stipulation 8.2, not 8.3. So staff does request a clarification of that as part of an approval motion if the council does approve that, and with that, I'll turn it over to Commander Robinson.
Commander.
Um, good afternoon, Mayor Stanton, members of the council. I was asked to, um, provide some insight into that particular area from a public safety standpoint, and I'm happy to do so. As you know, I'm the commander of the, uh, Cactus Park Precinct, which borders from Indian School Road all the way up to just south of the 303, from the freeway east or freeway west to the city limits. For the longest time, Cactus Park Precinct, specifically the area up and down 27th Avenue, from about Indian School Road up to Dunlap, was what we referred to in, within the Police Department as the red spot within, um, the entire city. It was the highest crime area around. For the last couple of years, we have worked from a, um, a partnership, a grand partnership standpoint, where we were able to bring the crime down to, for the last several months, it's been the lowest in the city.
Wow.
Um, I'd like to take credit for that personally, but that, that wouldn't be appropriate. You know, but the bottom line is, the, the real, the, yeah, the reason for the crime, the real credit goes to the partnership that we have been able to develop amongst the community in that area, the community, Grand Canyon University, other city departments, and the Police Department. Those four groups working together collectively have been responsible for what I think has been, you know, our Herculean task, bringing the crime down, not just in, around, um, that particular area, but for the entire precinct as a whole. That having been said, I was asked specifically, with everything going on in and around Grand Canyon University, what did I believe or how did I feel from a public safety standpoint? And I provided my input with 35 years of law enforcement experience. I felt that the plans that had been presented, had an opportunity to talk with other city staff about it, it would continue to help us as we move forward in our partnership with all the groups involved, the university, the citizen groups, other city departments, and the Police Department, all working collectively. I think it is prime for us to continue forcing the crime down in that particular area. It's not just about putting people in jail, it's about making the neighborhoods much safer, having the appearance of safety for the people who live in the area, and all the, the plans that have been in place, the areas, the, the moves that are being made, we feel that, you know, that's just an important part of it.
Thank you very much, Commander, for your testimony and your service. Uh, next is Stephen Earl. Uh, you have up to 10 minutes, uh, on behalf of your client, Grand Canyon University. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Stephen Earl, uh, with the law firm of Earl Curley and Lagard, and we are here in behalf of Grand Canyon University. Uh, we appreciate this slide that's up. We're hoping that we can quickly get, uh, access to the other slides we have, uh, provided to give the council a little bit of additional information about this request, but prior to those slides going up, let me just tell you that we are here to abandon and essentially privatize short portions of Coulter Street and 30th Drive. The reason we're seeking to do that, and the only real motivation for us doing this, is the safety of the students and faculty at Grand Canyon University. As you saw in that last exhibit that Alan put up, there has been almost $500 million in reinvestment in the community that's been, uh, in redevelopment associated with Grand Canyon University. Uh, there are now fif, 14, uh, 16, excuse me, 16,000 on-campus students at this university, and that's going to grow to 25,000 students. They're going to be utilizing, um, I hope I'm doing this correct. Yeah. They're going to be utilizing the exact streets to get to and from dormitories, the sports field that's shown there in green, numerous, uh, educational buildings that are on both sides of this, and if I can use this correctly. This is what's called Little Canyon Trail. You can see all these dormitories up and down the west side of Little Canyon Trail that runs from Missouri down to Camelback Road. So you can see that inside of the area for abandonment, the work requesting we now, uh, control or own about 95% with the support of, of Coulter Commons, we're at about 98%. Uh, and, and the only reason we're doing this is for the safety of the student body. We've all heard about the, uh, terrible incidents that have occurred, uh, around the country at colleges due to, um, you know, nefarious characters creating havoc on college campuses, and, and we even had our own incident up at NAU. So we're hypersensitive to making sure that we do the best we can to protect, and in fact, the Security Department at Grand Canyon University has been rated 14th in the country because of its efforts to make sure that their students are safe, and we have an obligation to the community and to the parents of the students to do our best. That was the motivation. That said, we realized that we had two issues we had to solve, and the first issue had to do with there are pri, two private properties owned by Mr. Palmer and, and Mr. Warner, that we needed to make sure that their access was fully preserved, and hopefully, we even believe enhanced by what we were proposing. Uh, we, we met with the folks at Coulter Commons, and they agreed that what we were doing, and I'll show you in just a second, was exactly what they needed and therefore recommended approval. The second major task for us was to make sure that there was continued access to Little Canyon Trail, and you're going to hear from a couple of folks who, you know, feel that that's the most important thing we can do. Uh, so between the couple of private property owners inside of this, uh, area, as well as access to Little Canyon Trail, we went through this effort. By the way, the hearing officer, uh, felt so strongly about these last two efforts that 20 stipulations were placed on this case, and we've added seven more. So we're, the report you got from Alan Stevenson has 27 stipulations devoted to the next two things. Uh, this shows the area, and you can see on this exhibit, the two property owners are here, Little, uh, Coulter Commons is here. Uh, as it relates to the things that Commander Robinson just got through saying, the crime rate in this area has dropped from number one as a hotspot to one that's off the list. Uh, and, and while numerous, uh, neighborhood organizations and certainly the Police Department are primarily responsible, we've done our part by purchasing, uh, belighted properties, crime-ridden properties, and bringing them, uh, into redevelopment. For example, just to the south, this is the only example I'm going to use, but just to the south of Coulter Commons, there was an apartment complex that in just one year, from 2014 to 2015, had 800 calls for service in one year. That shows the level of problem that existed in this area. That's now been razed and gone, and will be redeveloped as part of the campus. But the next slide shows our effort to try and make sure that if you are a private property owner, and Mr. Palmer and Mr. Warner have properties that they rent out, and they wanted to make sure not only themselves, but all renters, all invitees, all guests, all service vehicles would be able to bypass the gate that we're going to be installing there. This is a very important exhibit because it shows that while there is a gate on this inside lane, there is no restriction on the outside lane. So those of these owners who are authorized, or even any city vehicles or emergency vehicles, completely bypass the gate and the guard. And all they have to have in their cars is a placard saying that they're, you know, that they have rights to be there. In addition to that, we were required by the stipulations to maintain these private, excuse me, these public sidewalks, just as they are today, and that they're completely open to the public, and we have to give an easement to the city to confirm that. So the next slide shows, hopefully I'm doing this correctly here, this is the shot west bound on Coulter, as you see it today with the gate put in. And so the gate is right here. Anybody that's authorized has a placard, going to Coulter Commons or going down to the rental properties of Mr. Palmer and Mr. Warner, bypass this gate entirely. In addition, any pedestrian on either side of the street, completely unfettered access, and will not be stopped or questioned. Now, there is also a sign we're putting up to make sure that anyone coming up here knows that they have absolute right on this sign, it will tell them they can go all the way to Little Canyon Trail. So any pedestrian coming along will have full rights. In addition, we've agreed to, in the stipulations, to completely maintain the street as it is today, even though it may be private, it will be just like it is today. All underground utilities will remain. We have to not only maintain it there and maintain the sidewalks, at no cost to the private property owners. This shows the cul-de-sac that's there today at the west end of Coulter. This has been highly used in the past by students and parents dropping kids off for school. We're going to eliminate all that so that those that are using this, these sidewalks to get to Little Canyon Trail will not be as bothered as they were, and it will certainly help the folks who live in these two houses, the renters that Mr. Palmer and Mr. Warner have, because we now no longer will have high activity levels here. And we're, I'll show you in a minute how we're going to bring the students from the parking lot right to the east, across on a new sidewalk, and then we're going to expand, excuse me, a new crosswalk, then we're going to expand this sidewalk to seven feet. So we're going to try and keep students out of the street as well, for the benefit of those private property owners. These are pictures of Little Canyon Trail. It's a beautiful asset that's been created by the city. It connects Missouri, half mile down to Camelback Road. It's for pedestrians to use, as well as those that are disabled to use. This next slide, we think, is important because it shows where there is parking. For those who wish to drive to Little Canyon Trail, on Missouri, the city has a park, and inside that park, they have a parking lot that can be easily utilized by both able-bodied people as well as disabled to park here, and then there is an easy access up of sidewalk, across here, over to Little Canyon Trail here. This slide shows exactly what that sidewalk looks like today. There's people coming out of the, out of the Little Canyon Park down to Missouri. It's a widened sidewalk, and then as it goes past our property, Grand Canyon University's property, it's also a widened sidewalk, tree-lined on both sides to get to Little Canyon Trail. This is the parking lot right just due east of Little Canyon Trail that's there today. We are, as indicated, installing a new crosswalk so that people can walk safely across the street rather than near the two privately-held properties, and then a brand, a larger expanded sidewalk to seven feet in order to not bother the private property owners. These are the stipulations that were approved. I just wanted to go over a few of them that I thought were important. I've sort of mentioned it already, but all right-of-way on both streets will be maintained as a public utility easement. So again, it stays exactly the way it is. All maintenance for the privatized streets is required to be done by Grand Canyon University, and we have to maintain open access to Little Canyon Trail, which obviously has open access of both Missouri and Camelback, but the neighbors want to have access along Coulter, so that's being maintained. We have private owners along Coulter, so we're giving them permanent unrestricted recorded access easements for themselves, their guests, their renters, their invitees. The man gates that we're talking about having the security boost will have a bypass express lane, so all these folks that belong inside can go without any hindrance. Is that my timeframe, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm happy to respond to any questions you might have, but we believe that between these stipulations and the ones we've added today that are in the staff report, we're providing sufficient notice to everyone. The one thing I didn't mention was, at the end of all this, we're going to provide a notice to the whole community about their access to Little Canyon Trail, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Earl. Any questions for Mr. Earl before we move over to the opposition pursuant to the agreement of the parties? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Earl. Bev Conick, you and Jack Kaiser, between the two, you have up to, what's up? How long is your presentation?
I, I need to help.
Okay, how much time do you think you need? Normally it would be a two-minute limit, but obviously I gave Mr. Earl up to 10 minutes, and I.
I don't want to tell him. I can't, I can't five minutes.
You want five minutes? You got it? Jack, you ought to keep it tight, then.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Up to five minutes, then, thank you.
And we really do appreciate this opportunity to address this issue. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm standing before you this afternoon. I'm advocating for disability access to Little Canyon Trail. I'm one of the leaders who actually helped originate the vision of it, and brought together the stakeholders to even help create this wonderful linear park. And I never imagined that I would be one of the people who would no longer be able to enjoy Little Canyon Trail because I now have limited mobility. If anyone's bumped into my knees, they know I wear braces. The half-mile round trip from the nearest parking lot is just too big a hurdle to travel in order to access the trail at all. You know, we realize a tremendous community dream in building Little Canyon Trail. We got fed up with the desolate graffiti, crime-ridden trash-and-litter student path and irrigation ditch that it was, and we came together on this project. The completion of our five-year dream was Little Canyon Trail, which is a half-mile corridor, as has been shown in the photos, of beautifully landscaped, artistically-designed, multi-use trail. This transformational project received two Valley Forward Awards in 2010, and the $1.2 million tax investment has exceeded, succeeded, excuse me, magnificently in crime reduction and beautification of the community. But street privatization will end disability access, and I cannot stress that strong enough. Our community, well, let's put it this way, it was built, Little Canyon Trail was built to comply with the ADA, to ensure that people with physical limitations would be able to enjoy the beauty the trail has. But privatization will end the only and the last possible trail entrance where disability parking would still be possible. People in wheelchairs or using walkers, mothers with young children, elderly from the nearby Coulter Commons, others who are not up to walking that half-mile round trip, will not be able to enjoy the trail. And this was built for disability access to not enable such parking, makes a mockery out of disability access. Security is also not the only reason for the privatization. On October 15th, Salt River Project, the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation publicly acknowledged that Salt River Project fielded an inquiry from GCU Development Staff as to the process for requesting a paving over the canal lateral along the trail. This action would eliminate the historic water feature that is the centerpiece of the trail. This request makes sense if GCU's intentions are for an eventual takeover of this priceless public project. Our three state universities all have public streets crisscrossing their campuses. The thing that happened at Flagstaff would not have been prevented by any kind of security that they're talking about. It was a student who was allowed on campus. So, and these state campuses, having these public access streets and so on, this hasn't stopped their growth or viability or threatened the public safety. So why must GCU be so different? Our community feels the city of Phoenix must not abandon its public streets nor its legal and moral obligation to provide ADA parking, nor waste our taxpayers' money. I'd like to ask the council to seriously consider a continuance so that we can explore viable options to provide GCU with its desire for security while meeting the city and the community's needs also. This conversation has never taken place, and I think the council, before they make an irrevocable decision, which is what you would do if you vote for abandonment at this time, it's not reversible. Let's see if we can come up with a SEPTAB system that provides this kind of security GCU wants, but we, but there are other options that could be explored. Let's give it a chance, please. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Conick. Any questions from members of the council at this time? There may be some after all the testimony, so please stand by near closely. Okay, thank you so much. Jack Kaiser is up next. I understand you have gathered up one other card, you have up to four minutes to provide testimony. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor, Council. Right up front, I want to thank anybody that's here to support GCU and their incredible contribution to our economy, to education, and the amazing contribution they've made to the community that surrounds them. They've done a wonderful job. Out of many things that are done, sometimes things aren't perfect. And as Bev is asking, I'm asking, actually, while I'd like to see this overturned, I really would like to have a three-month moratorium to explore some possibilities. How many on council have been to the trail before it was built and after it was built? Probably none of you? You saw some pictures? I know we gave you a tour afterwards, but if we didn't give you a tour before, Bob Rink did, though. All right. I gotta get along here. If you would, I do have some photos on page four, but you saw some up on the screen. On page four, it shows the before pictures. It was, it was hard. It was ghastly. And I can't tell you how much changing the environment changed the behavior. We displaced bad behavior with good behavior. Vibrant, high-usage, great environment that informs people how to behave. I'm suggesting a possibility of that, that we, I just came up with the other idea the other day. Can you imagine a boulevard from 27th Avenue, a grand boulevard, to the cul-de-sac? This could be a public-private partnership with the city and GCU. It would definitely be a feather in our cap for our intention for complete streets initiative. In other words, it'd be tree-lined, it would be safe, we would separate car traffic from bicycles and pedestrians. It would be a grand entrance for GCU, and it'd be a grand entrance for Little Canyon Trail. What I ask is, well, first, let me give you a context of the history. We originally had four access points, and we could have had a fifth one, and we gave away three of those. South end, in former council, it wasn't you guys, Greg, maybe you were there, Mayor, we abandoned the 200, 300 feet of the stub of 31st Avenue, and while former Councilman Claude Maddox was in office, deeply regretted that because we ended up with easement conflicts in trying to take that trail all the way to Camelback in a safe way. And what happened was, the driveway was expanded for commuter traffic, and it's now, it's untenable, it's too dangerous. And GCU did not accept my suggestion, more creativity. We put a speed table in there such that we don't get traffic backed up on a camelback, but pedestrians could push a button and have access to get across that speed table. They also turned down a suggestion I had for five, a mere five parking spaces by the cul-de-sac, three for ADA and two for public. Flat-out turned it down. They also, when I asked, talked to the lawyers, they thought it might be a good idea to go back on my suggestion, that we not have placards or decals. But then at the abandonment hearing, he said, "We'll work something out for placards and decals." Now, maybe that will work for Coulter Commons, but that won't work for an impromptu visitor to one of those residences. Or the grandchildren decide to go see Grandma and Grandpa Coulter Commons on the spur of a moment during visiting hours, they have to stop and give their case for why they're going in there. It's a deterrent visually because it appears to be private property. Well, it will be. What I'm suggesting with a boulevard is, we keep the street, but we help Grand Canyon University, and we create something that's beyond their dreams and our dreams, that hasn't even been considered. We need the time to explore that. Where am I at on time? Somebody keeping track?
Oh, there it is.
Is that the answer I get? A beep? Okay. Well, thank you, and I hope you deeply consider the fact that we can explore this further, and I have a bunch of information of context that you need to consider, I believe. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaiser. Gail Palmer, do you have to write testimony? Good to see you, and then how much time do you think you need?
Mayor Stanton, this is Reese Anderson, Puean Lake, on behalf of Gail Palmer and Gary Perkins Warner.
Excellent, okay.
And they've deferred their time to me, and if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll proceed now, and.
So you say up to six minutes, then?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So again, Mayor Stanton, members of the council, Reese Anderson with Puean Lake, here on behalf of Mr. Palmer and Mr. Perkins Warner. With me in the audience today are Mr. Perkins Warner and Gail, and Janice Palmer, along with Tony Misseldine of Jackson White, representing. So as co-council for those two owners, you know on the map where they are. They're right there at Little Canyon Trail, on the south side of Coulter Street. And in our opinion, this case is not about one of opposing GCU. This is about private property rights. And so we applaud and support the efforts of GCU to expand, we support their efforts to increase safety. That's not the issue before us today. The issue is really about private property rights and the ability for these folks to continue on with a public street. Imagine if you could, all of us might live in the same neighborhood, and a majority of us want to abandon the street and turn it into a private one, but some of us don't want to do that. I have never seen, and I can't think of, in my conversations with city staff, city attorneys, we cannot think of a single instance where the city of Phoenix has abandoned a public street with residential homes on it when there has not been unanimity. So this is a unique circumstance. Again, it's not about supporting GCU or trying to kick, this is about the private property rights of Mr. Palmer and Mr. Perkins Warner. If you think about, I've even anecdotally talked to some colleagues in other cities, they can't think of another instance where this has happened, so it's quite rare. Why do you might ask, Reese, why do you say that? That's because I would appreciate, and council members, if we step back for just a second to look at it. Now, our firm's been involved for about three weeks now. The point is that there are a lot of legal issues, and Tony Misseldine with Jackson White's given your city attorneys a letter outlining a lot of those, and I don't want to go into them now, but I want to incorporate them by reference for the record. But the point is this. When you look at what's going on here and the stipulations that have come forward from the hearing officer, you ask yourself the question, why is it necessary to abandon the street to accomplish these goals? There's other ways to do it, and we would like that chance to explore that creativity with GCU. We'd like to do it in the cool light of day rather than under the guise of a pending abandonment of the street. A lot of the issues that we raised in our October 16th letter that was given to you and your city attorneys, staff along with GCU have countered that in a memo that came out this morning with revised stipulations. And if you look at those items on there, we just got it this morning. So, Mayor, you might ask, Reese, what are you asking me for? We'd like a 30-to-60-day continuance. So while we're here in opposition to the abandonment, today we're asking you for the opportunity to sit down and negotiate with GCU. A lot of these issues here are interesting in the fact that, for example, back to my example where we all live in the same neighborhood, if you abandon the street against my own will and enforce me to give all of my neighbors an easement over it, it just doesn't fit right, it just doesn't sit well. And so I don't think, just don't think that there's legal authority, if I could kindly disagree, that there's legal authority on behalf of the city to say, "I'm going to abandon a street to you. You now get out to the middle of the street," right? That's the rules on an abandonment, and then force me to give an easement to everybody else. That's what these new stipulations are saying. And when you do that, you have to ask yourself the question, does that contrary to my own rules and my own ordinance? And if you look at the city's own ordinance here, and I'm quoting now from 3163 of the city code, "The city council may dispose of roadways, portions of roadways, no longer necessary for public use." Well, where I've got two citizens who are still using it, to me, that constitutes public use. And then I go to 3164, Mayor, and it says, "Title shall vest in the adjacent property owners, subject to the same encumbrances, liens, limitations, restrictions." Well, that's interpreted always as the PUEs, the water lines, the sewer lines, et cetera. In this case here, what's being forced upon me is the obligation to purchase the right-of-way when I was not asking for it to be abandoned in the first place. Then what's being forced upon our clients is the obligation to maintain the streets. Now, Mr. Earl, I think he just inadvertently slipped up because clearly under the revised stipulations that came out today, the obligation to maintain becomes the property owners that the property is abandoned to. And so now I've got, this is, by analogy, council members, we have never taken a zoning case and said to the neighbors next door, "You have an obligation to do X, Y, Z because this person wants to develop." So I go back again to say, this case is not about opposing GCU, this is about private property rights. And we ask you just to think about that, and on our, give us the cool light of day to solve this. There's a pending offer open from GCU to our clients, we'd like the opportunity to possibly achieve a resolution of a sale. If GCU wants to say, "Look, we've got 18 months afterwards to solve this issue," I counter by saying. counter by saying, just by way of example, council members, give us a 60-day continuance, and take that stipulation and say, "You've got 16 months to solve it." Point being, we can get them to the same place at the same time without slowing them down one bit, because, again, we support their issues. Mayor, I think my time's almost up. If I could just leave you with this, my final thought. Again, we're here in opposition, but we're asking for a continuance. Three things, I'm just going to be, 30 seconds, Mayor. Three things I would ask the council today. One, please voice your support for GCU and its expansion and its efforts. Two, please voice your support for private property rights, personal property rights of these two owners. Three, ask the parties to get together, forget the past, and negotiate in good faith to get a resolution everyone can live with, and we can come back to you without these issues looming over your head. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'd appreciate the opportunity to answer some questions or shed more light on issues. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Any questions by members of this council for Mr. Anderson? Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you, council members.
Paul Barnes, did you wish to provide testimony or just show your support for the continuance Okay, thank you for supporting them, and I noticed Bev wearing the yellow sticker as well. All right, next speaker. Pastor Stephen Hayes, I know you're in favor, did you wish to provide testimony, or come on down, you have up to two minutes, followed by Mary Obrakta, if you'd like to provide testimony, or just, I saw, we do have a copy of your letter in support of the proposal. Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Our church property borders Grand Canyon University and also the Little Canyon Trail, and I had a few concerns when I saw the plans, but now I know that students from Grand Canyon will have access to our church campus, not just on Sunday, but they also come for classes throughout the week. So, as a church family that has been in that community for 45 years, we do support this. And we've had a great partnership with Grand Canyon, it hasn't been without its challenges, but the administration's been very open to help us solve any problems that we've had, and so I support this.
Thank you, Pastor, for coming down. Mary Obrakta, did you wish to provide testimony? I know we got your letter as well. Okay, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Obrakta, from the Ocatillo Glen Neighborhood Association. And just very briefly, just from a citizen's perspective, I would have to say that I would love to live in an area that I know that there is a security station on one end, and a security station, or even just one security station, that's going to monitor who's coming into the property and who's coming out. I mean, I'd love to get UPS packages left at my front door and have them still be there when I get home from work. From a parent perspective, if I had a student that was attending Grand Canyon University, I would so appreciate this layer of security that not only the university, but Commander Robinson and Cactus Park Precinct, community members, the other resources that are coming together to go through this in order to make that area a safer place for students to be able to live, to cross, to park, and not have to worry about anything. But I think that's really all I have to cover, just from my own perspective. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, your leadership of the Ocatillo Glen Neighborhood Association, Maria Maldonado. You're in favor of the proposal, thanks for coming down.
Mayor, council, if it's okay, I'm going to translate for Ms. Maldonado.
That's fine, thank you.
I'm Maria Yelling.
Hola, buenas noches, mi nombre es Maria Lucila Maldonado, y soy del Black Watch de Vecinos Unidos siempre.
Good morning, my name is Maria Maldonado, and I am with the Vecinos Unidos Black Watch.
Pues yo vengo a hablar acerca de lo que me ha dicho la gente con la que está en nuestro Black Watch.
I'm here to talk to you about what the residents of the neighborhood told me when I surveyed them on this issue.
Y pues, la gente con la que yo estoy trabajando, ellos les parece algo bueno el que haya seguridad en el parque, en el little park.
She spoke to quite a few people, and they indicated that they felt a lot safer with the guard at that area, using the Little Canyon Trail.
Porque ahí es donde llevan a sus niños, y ellos miran, como es, por ejemplo, miran a muchachos que están drogándose o que están vendiendo droga.
In the past, when the parents have been walking down the Little Canyon Trail, they've noticed drug dealers, their children have been approached to buy drugs and those types of things, and they feel that with an extra layer of security, that would stop. It has already stopped since there's guards down there.
Y pues, ellos dicen que ellos sentirían más seguros con sus niños si saben que está alguien vigilando y que esté, pues, bien observado el lugar.
She said they just felt that they would be safer with that situation, with the streets close to the public, the drug dealers wouldn't feel as safe going down there.
Mucha gente tiene miedo de venir a dar su opinión.
She said many of the people were afraid to even use the Little Canyon Trail.
A veces porque piensan que van a tomar en contra de ellos algo, o tienen miedo de hablar, de presentarse aquí.
Oh, many people that were in favor, that are in favor of it, didn't want to sign the petition because of the documentation status. They felt that they would be tracked down, so they didn't sign it, but they spoke to her about it.
Sí, y pues yo les digo que no deben de tener miedo, que nosotros también tenemos voz.
She said she told them not to be afraid, that we all have a voice.
Y yo nada más quiero decirle a las personas que se oponen.
She'd like to speak to the people that are opposed.
Que si nosotros supiéramos de que nos van a quitar el parque, o quieren hacer algo la universidad en contra de ese parque, pues nosotros los apoyaríamos también.
She feels that if they believed that GCU was intent, was to eventually take over Little Canyon Park, they would be on their side, they would be fighting with you, as I would be.
Pero nosotros sabemos que no es así, hemos estado hablando, entonces todos modos nosotros vamos a estar al pendiente para, porque nosotros queremos lo mejor para nuestros hijos.
She said that they're just feel that this is the best thing for their families.
Entonces nosotros vamos a estar al pie del cañón, o sea, cuidando, y queremos, o sea, tener más segura nuestra comunidad por nuestros niños, que son lo más importante.
See, their main focus is the safety of their children, and they use the Little Canyon Trail on a regular basis, so this is what they're asking for.
Y pues, esa es la forma de pensar de nosotros, de que nosotros estamos a favor de que se haga eso, por seguridad, más que nada, pues para nuestros hijos.
And so, they just want to reiterate that the safety is the big issue for them, and their...
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maldonado, very much appreciated. In favor, not wishing to speak, Faith Weiss, Rich Osterly, Robert Romantic, Michael Shern, Prescott Smith, John Weiss, Leah Rutledge, and Paul Smith. We did receive a series of letters from various neighbor associations in the vicinity of Grand Canyon University, and I believe they're all in favor of the proposal, so I'll make sure that gets submitted for the record. That's all the cards I have. Is anyone else wish to testify on this item? Lou Crowley, you have up to two minutes.
And I didn't write supporter or opposed, since I am in favor of the continuance and the parties working together. I have a little bit of a unique perspective on the area. I was an Alhambra Village Planning Committee member. At the time, I lived at 30th and Camelback. I was raised at 36th and Palaverdy. I've been on that trail many times since its inception, when it was just a dirt path. But I believe the objections and the considerations of those that have been asking for the continuance have a bit of the truth that you need to deal with, and make sure that there are places taken care of. Insofar as that, I've always known, back when I was on the Alhambra Village, and it was when that park came into existence, that, back then, when it was a Baptist college, they said that when they expanded, that they would like to get that as a part of their expansion. So, I can see what they're trying to do out there, and if you think that the park isn't going to be a part of it, what can I say? And as in the security, having been a Village Planning Committee member and living in that neighborhood, if a dope dealer is there, he didn't come from some other area, he would have been from that neighborhood, and might have been related to the little kid that was walking down the street. So, painting the picture, that it's drug-infested, and that a bunch of addicts and that are hanging there and coming from all other parts of the city, I don't appreciate that smokescreen. It's a very mixed neighborhood, it has a high concentration of undocumented, but that doesn't make them drug dealers when they're on that street. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lou Crowley. So I have no additional cards on this item. The councilman representing the area is the vice mayor, so I'll turn it over to you for any comments and/or motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'll make some comments, and then I'll...
I'm sorry, we have to close the hearing, I apologize. So the public hearing on this item, item 78, is now closed. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I will make some comments, then I'll make a motion. I want to thank everyone for coming out, and for speaking up, not only today, but throughout this entire process. I have been in office since 2012, and the growth of GCU has been discussed a lot. And, you know, Mr. Anderson, you mentioned a couple of things, what you're asking the council to do is, along with the continuance here, to support GCU, to consider property rights, and to, of course, encourage all parties to come together. And I will tell you that personally, sitting from this seat with this responsibility, I've done all of those things, and I think that we've done all of those things, city staff has done all of those things. Working with the Cactus Park Precinct, at the time, it was Benny Peña, and Commander Robinson, you really taking it to the next step, I'm speaking of the Crime Safety Initiative, putting that Crime Safety Initiative together, in that four-mile radius, a grant that GCU is, you know, that, I mean, they're putting up quite a bit of money on that partnership. Where that began, and many will remember this, that area lost a weed and seed grant, or, I'm sorry, didn't lose it, the grant ran out, and there was no funding left, couldn't get another grant, so GCU stepped up and started to do something that was aligned with the mission of that grant, from the very beginning, pulling some of our community leaders, neighborhood leaders, business leaders, together with GCU, and of course, our office and the, I mean, obviously, you could not have done it without the Police Department. As Commander Robinson just mentioned, you know, crime rates are down, and I'm very careful when I say that, I know, Commander, you are as well. We have a lot to celebrate, but there's still a lot of work to do. I mean, try telling someone who's been, you know, burglarized, like, the crime rates are down, it doesn't resonate, so, but the fact of the matter is, you know, they are down. There's a lot going on there, and so all parties deserve a great deal of credit for The, you know, when I met with both sides, I'll continue to do that, but when I met with both sides on this particular case, and I think it was conveyed today, you know, some of the, one of the priority issues has to do with access and ADA parking. I will tell you from the very beginning, from the very beginning, meaning, you know, when I first took office, in fact, prior to taking office, and now speaking as a first responder as well, public safety is the number-one priority. Keeping this community safe and adding to the safety of this community has always been and will always be the number-one priority, and that is what has to be considered also, it's safety of this community, of the neighborhood, of all property owners, and frankly, I believe, it's now more than 8,000 students that are attending every day at Grand Canyon University, and in keeping their safety in mind. We just heard from Commander Robinson earlier, now, I'll just directly ask you, Commander Robinson, do you think, do you think this particular booth would add to the safety, what are your thoughts in terms of adding this particular guard booth in terms of public safety or safety of the community?
Vice Mayor Valenzuela, I think the best way for me to answer that question is by, I take a real hard look at all the crime that occurs in the area. Our violent crime is mostly robberies, strong-arm robberies, armed robberies, it runs the gamut. The vast majority of those take place by people from a transient standpoint. What I mean by transient, they're on foot. So, the deterrent, you know, things that deter crime from occurring is usually things being out there to stop people, people saying, "Hey, I got to go somewhere else and do whatever it is I'm going to be doing." From my perspective, and it's just that, just a law enforcement perspective, having a guard gate, a gate out there, that type of obvious presence, I think it's going to move people in another direction out of the area, which is what I think we have been seeing all along. But, again, I go back to that partnership with the community, and Bev and everybody else, they've been a real big part of it, the community, the university, the Police Department, and other city departments collectively all working together. But to answer the question, yes, I think that presence does help.
Okay, thank you. And I want to, you know, let my colleagues know, and I think everyone who's sitting here also knows that we've continued to meet, we've been meeting, will continue to meet, you know, moving forward, and, you know, so, I mean, that said, a couple of things that I just want to point out, the stipulations attached to this case require that fair market value be paid by whichever adjoining property owner decides to purchase the right-of-way, so this is not a giveaway of anything, I want to point that out. The stipulations also require that access easement be dedicated to all private property owners inside the abandoned area, so that the property owner access can be maintained to all properties, but it will be maintained by whoever owns it. Approval of this request will also guarantee public access to Little Canyon Trail, to enhance signage directing people from the park and in the neighborhood to the trail for its future use. Again, I met with both sides, my office is met with both sides, stayed in contact, will continue to be in contact, and as I mentioned before, one of the point, the priority points has to do with the accessibility of Little Canyon Trail, and GCU's agreed to create signs that make it clear, as clear as possible, that the public is welcome and encourage the trail. The abandonment does not change the status of Little Canyon Trail as a public amenity for all community members to enjoy. And it is, it's great that there is already ADA parking spaces within the park at the north end of the trail to provide access to the trail from that end, but as Ms. Harvey mentioned, that may be a little too far, and the ADA parking came up again today, it's important to have ADA parking on the other side. I do want to point out that currently, there is no ADA parking on the southern side, on or around Colter. There is no ADA parking there today. There hasn't been ADA parking in the past.
Okay, let the vice mayor finish, then, I'll have attorney, please.
Okay. And, so, there isn't ADA parking there currently, there hasn't been ADA parking in the past. It doesn't mean that it's okay to move forward without it, and that's one of the points that I want to address with my motion. Now, before I make this motion, and I have the utmost respect for both Jack and Bev, and for what you have done in the community, and will continue to do in this community. Little Canyon Trail is something that is tangible, it's something that you can see and feel and touch, but that's just an example of the hard work and the dedication that you continue to display in the community, and you certainly have led by example, and I appreciate all of your work, and I also appreciate the fact that you're highlighting that there is no ADA parking currently on the southern side. As a result, I will add a stipulation to address this particular issue. Now, so... issue. Now, so now I think I'm ready to make the motion. The motion is to, my motion is to improve this abandonment subject to the 27 stipulations contained in the memo from Ellen Stevenson dated October 20th, 2015. In addition, I'm going to add a new stipulation number 28 to read as follows. GCU shall provide two ADA-accessible parking spaces located on the northern end of the parking lot directly south of 30th Drive, intersection with Coulter Street, as approved by the Planning and Development Department. And Ellen, does that, does that, I want to be sure that that covers-
Is that an appropriate additional stipulation added by the Vice Mayor?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is an appropriate stipulation, yes. And I just would add for the record, the clarification I made is stipulation eight regarding the hours of operation, if you could include that as well.
Okay. And the changes to stipulation eight is read into the record by Ellen Stevenson.
The Vice Mayor has recommended a motion consistent with, I guess, planning, excuse me, with staff recommendation, is that right? But added a stipulation that would allow for ADA parking essentially in the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay, good. Which is a subject matter of much testimony here today. All right, that is the motion, and you indicate that's an appropriate motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Correct.
We have a second on that motion. Ms. Conack, that obviously, he addressed a little bit of the issue about ADA parking in the cul-de-sac that was addressed to your testimony. Thank you for bringing that up. You want any additional comments on the motion?
I just, I think with this motion, again, we're keeping the safety of the community, the neighbors, property owners, and frankly, more than 8,000 students that are attending GCU currently, and that number will continue to grow. But we are keeping their safety in mind. We're keeping property rights in mind. We're keeping access to the trail in mind. In fact, we are bringing ADA parking to an area of the trail that has never had it. And I want to thank everyone, all the parties, for coming together and, you know, getting us to this point, and I feel good about the motion.
All right, that is the Vice Mayor's motion. We have a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? I'd only add, in support of the Vice Mayor, who was a strong advocate of the university, strong advocate of the neighborhood, he has good relationships with everyone involved. And in fact, this is not a situation where the neighborhood is opposed to the university, just the opposite. They may, on occasion, disagree on some members of the nearby neighborhood, et cetera. But we have one of the fastest-growing universities in the United States of America in Phoenix, Arizona, growing in District Five in West Phoenix. And overall, that's a huge benefit to the future of this city. That's more college graduates in our community, and Grand Canyon University is of huge benefit. It's happening in the middle of an established neighborhood, a long-established neighborhood. And there's going to be some bumping up against interest on occasion during this process. This is not the last case that we're going to hear before this council. And I trust and respect the Vice Mayor, who really is an advocate for the neighborhood, to strike the right balance, to allow for this incredible thing that we have going on in the community, the growth as university combined in a way that would do, it would still protect the integrity of this neighborhood. I think the, this proposal with the stipulations that were previously added, and with the stipulation that the Vice Mayor added to protect access to the trail, particularly for those who happen to have disabilities, is striking the right balance in that regard. And I'll certainly be supporting that motion. With that, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone who came and testified. Next item on the agenda is item number 86. Item number 86 concerns the proposed historic overlay of the, it's listed on the agenda as Frank Lloyd Wright House, but I think it's probably David and Gladys Wright House is a better way of describing it. Anyway, so it's the proposed historic overlay of the David and Gladys Wright House. Councilman DeCiccio, this house is in your district. I understand you may have a motion on continuance. I want to hear the motion first, and then it may limit the number of, amount of testimony that we have as a result. Councilman?
Sure, Mayor. I do want to hear from the developer as well. My understanding is that they're now in favor of a continuance. They were opposed to it originally, now they're in favor of it. Since the developer's in favor of it, you cannot hear? Oh, my understanding is that the developer is now in favor of a continuance. They sent a very strongly worded letter opposing it. So, and my understanding is that the neighborhood is also favorable toward a continuance on this to March 2nd, so I'm going to make a motion to continue this to March 2nd.
We have a motion to continue-
But I want to hear from the developer, too. I want them to ask for the continuance.
Do you need a second?
All right, we have a-
Second.
There's a motion in favor of continuance and a second. I'll certainly have anyone that wants to come testify on the issue of the continuance come and testify. When there is a motion for continuance, I will not accept testimony on the underlying issue. There are a lot of, obviously, hotly contested issues as it relates to the future of the David and Gladys Wright House, but I will accept testimony as it relates to whether or not this council should continue this matter until March 2nd. Ms. Hickman, did you wish to provide testimony on the continuance? You were obviously heard what the councilman was suggesting. Please.
I did. Thank you very much, Mayor, and Councilman DeCiccio, and the rest of the council, for an opportunity to speak to the issue of the continuance. So my name is Vanessa Hickman, and my address is 1324 East Villa Teresa Drive, Phoenix, 85022. I'm here this evening on behalf of Zach Rawling and the David Wright House LLC, the owner of the property that we are discussing today at 5212 East Exeter Boulevard. So we did, in fact, file a, two letters requesting withdrawal of this matter. They were submitted by Mary O'Grady and Megan Grable with Osborne Malladon, who are here in the audience if you have any questions about the substance of those letters. The underlying issue is that we believe that the existing application is legally insufficient, and that our 6.1-acre application is one that merits approval of the council. So in response to the question of the continuance, we are supportive of a continuance on this matter so that we have an opportunity to continue our significant public outreach. We had a meeting earlier this week with over 200 people in attendance. It was a public meeting on our historic preservation landmark application. We plan to file our special permit application in mid-November, and we would like the opportunity to meet with Councilman DeCiccio and meet with the adjacent neighbors, continue meeting with the larger neighborhood so that we can work on the uses and the restrictions in the special permit, and hopefully make some progress on some of the concerns that have been raised and have that opportunity. So what we'd like is a continuance of the staff-initiated, city-initiated 2.4 or 5-acre case, hopefully to May 18th, so that the applicant-initiated 6.1-acre case has a chance to work through the public process for both the historic preservation landmark and the special permit.
Okay, and I appreciate your preference being May. I think the motion was till March. Not your first choice, but are you okay with the request for continuance till March 2nd?
Yes, Mayor and Councilman DeCiccio, we are okay with the continuance until March. Again, our preference would be a little bit longer so that we don't have to bring folks back down here and request another continuance, but we are happy to have a continuance until March to give us some time to advance the discussions.
Thank you. I have a large number of cards, people who are here to provide substantive testimony on the item. I would now ask if anyone in the audience would want to testify on the issue of the continuance, and the continuance only. Chief Justice, if you'd like to provide testimony, please come forward. I should have recognized you earlier, but our Honorable Chief Justice Bud Jones, good to see you.
Nice to see you, too. Thank you very much. My presence here today was to be, was to speak on the substantive issues, the underlying issues. But I want to point out that in my experience, these continuances, and I believe this would be the eighth, if I count them up accurately, eighth continuance on this, is simply to give one side or the other a greater advantage. And we kick the can down the road, we keep continuing these things. It's one that ought to be brought on and resolved very quickly because it has some huge, both domestic and economic problems associated with the Arcadia neighborhood. I have lived in Arcadia for 52 years. I'm familiar with the intersections and the streets that surround the David Lloyd Wright home there on Exeter and Rubicon. And a continuance is not going to advance the positions of the parties a great deal. And so I would frankly oppose the continuance if I were being called upon. I don't have a strong opposition to it, but I want to suggest that the proposed plan for that property, for the Frank Lloyd Wright property, is destructive of one of the choice neighborhoods in Phoenix, Arizona. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Your Honor, very much. I guess, and I respect you so much. And full disclosure, my wife did clerk for the Chief Justice when she was a graduate of U of A Law School.
And she was marvelous.
That being said, yes, there has been a large number of continuances in this case. It is not, in my opinion, it's not a kick-the-can situation. There have been good reasons for each and every one of them. This case has come forward with various procedural postures, including significant threat of a demolition permit and use of that demolition permit in an earlier iteration. And so we needed this tool to make sure that legally there was not a chance that the home would be demolished. And I think my motivation here today to support the continuance is really out of an abundance of caution, just to make sure we have the legal protection we need, that there's no chance, no matter how difficult the conversations and negotiations might go, there is no legal chance that the, any, either current property owner or subsequent could pull a demolition permit during the pendency of the continuance. So that's certainly my motivation for-
Thank you.
-supporting it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Barnes, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am fully supportive of the continuance, but I want to explain why. This is the eighth continuance, and the neighbors, certainly in the Arcadia area, have been very, very patient. I find it somewhat interesting that one of the reasons given for this continuance was that so they could meet with Councilman DeCiccio and the immediate neighbors. Of course, they have formally refused to do that in the past. I assume their position now is changing. But there's only three alternatives if we don't do what we're doing now on this continuance. A withdrawal, that doesn't satisfy anybody because that leaves only the 6.1 issue in front of us, and that is totally, totally unacceptable. It's just not acceptable at all. And I don't see that additional time is necessarily going to make that. But then, you could try to force the issue by passing this on the acreage, the 2.4 or 5.4. Unfortunately, I was chair of the anti-prop 207 campaign, as the mayor will probably remember. So I'm pretty well-versed on the problems that that poses, and these two letters make that very clear. And I would say that it would be prudent for the city not to try to force that issue right now. So, long story short, the continuance should be granted, but I hope that the city will not surrender the neighborhood to the 6.1 acres and what they're trying to do. It's a vast overreach. It's not required, and, you know, are you going to save a building? Are you going to save a neighborhood? You should be able to save both. But what they're going and doing now, it's not going to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. It was a pleasure working with you on the No On 207 campaign many years ago. All right, anyone else in the audience which should provide testimonies, again, specifically, please come forward, on the issue of whether we should continue this item today or not continue today? Some of the speakers have tried to sneak some substantive arguments in there, but-
I won't do that.
You're not going to do that, no.
I'm not going to do that. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Craig Stebly. I live at 5539 East Exeter Boulevard. I'm the president of the Arcadia Camelback Neighborhood Association, and I am here to speak on their behalf. For three years, the Arcadia Camelback Mountain Neighborhood Association has continuously and totally supported the city's application for the preservation of the David Wright House, and we still do. However, we will not support anything beyond the 2.4 or 5 acres. That being said, we would like you to approve this request for continuance. I think the additional time is good for all parties concerned. And I have one editorial comment. It seems now that after three years, we are all facing a very distressing problem. How do we choose between historical preservation and neighborhood preservation? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stebly. Mr. Earl, do you wish to provide testimony on the issue of the continuance, please?
Yes. Mayor, it's my, well, first of all, my address, 3101 North Central Avenue here in Phoenix. It is my great pleasure to represent Dr. Lynn Sontag, who are the most immediately affected neighbors. Dr. Sontag is a renowned neurosurgeon at Barrow's Neurological Institute. They have lived in this home for almost 30 years and were great neighbors with David and Gladys Wright for 20 of those years. So they have a great deal invested in what's going on here. The motion before us is to continue. We can support that motion, not because we necessarily support the application of Zach Rawlings, but we support the notion of allowing more time for that to come forward. We want to make this this point. This application was for HPL. We do not support HPL on this property. We support HP. We want to preserve this house as it was, on its original, on the property of the 2.4 acres. As I said, we have, our clients, and not only the Sontags, but the Duffs who live across the street are also our clients, so they're directly, we're showing them both in green there. They want to see this home preserved. It's a high, you know, high-valued architectural wonder, but they do not support the L because the L leads to a special permit, which leads to commercialization. So the city's application is for HPL. We think candidly it had its purpose. It preserved the house, and that's wonderful. And we'd like to see that happen under HP. But if the continuance is necessary to, in order to provide more time, we would only make the other point, we are happy to meet with Mr. Rawlings and his team, along with Councilmember DeCiccio. We think that's a good move forward. We haven't been able to do that in the past.
Thank you very much, Mr. Earl. Ms. Rose, do you wish to provide testimony on behalf of your client, Mr. Spurling?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jordan Rose, and my address is 7144 North Stetson. I very much appreciate that you taking the time to think about this today, and my client, Peter Spurling, is also very directly affected, has the five-acre property who, directly to the east. We absolutely support a continuance today. We know that the applicant had wanted to withdraw the case, and we would have been against that. So we appreciate that. We also appreciate the applicant's representative indicating that they will now meet with us as a group. And we've several, many, many times over the last eight or so months, we've asked and been rejected. So we're happy to hear that. And if this continuance allows time for that, then we very much agree with it and support preservation of the house, just as Mr. Earl and his client indicated, but not the commercialization that we've seen in city applications so far. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rose. Jennifer Sheedy, you indicate you're in favor of continuance. Do you wish to provide testimony or just indicate your support? It's up to you. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to reiterate what Craig Stebly was, is president of the board, and as he pointed out, in 2012, the neighborhood had fully supported the city application. And so it begs the question, in my mind, anyway, is because of that good faith, but now is the city being threatened with demolition if you don't do a continuance? Because I think the neighborhood has demonstrated that they support the city application for the past three years.
I can answer that. No. There is no impending threat of demolition. However, if we don't have the proposed, staff-recommended- However, if we don't have the proposed, staff-recommended historic overlay at least pending, theoretically, it could happen, and who knows if there'd ever be an ownership change, et cetera. So I think it really is out of an abundance of caution. But no, no one has indicated in any regard that if they don't receive any particular action by this council that the home is under threat of demolition. The continuance does give it additional legal protection, however.
That's great. That's great, because that would not be acting in good faith. And I just wanted to reiterate, do again, support the city's application for HP, but definitely not HPL. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Graeble, indicate you're in favor of a continuance. Any reason to provide testimony? Okay. Tracy Wattis, did you wish to provide testimony, or is your, has your points been made? Please come forward, then go, yep. Again, keep your comments just on the issue about whether we should have continuance here today.
Hi, I'm reading this for Tracy Wattis because she had to leave, and that's why I'm going to read exactly what she wrote quickly. Tracy Wattis lives at 5402 East Exeter Boulevard. Thank you, Mayor Stanton, and councilmembers, for the opportunity to comment. Three years ago, our neighborhood placed faith in you as our mayor and each of you as councilmembers to honor the preservation of this home appropriately and with respect to our community. Phoenix city staff spent endless hours and financial resources, including a $39,000 inspection of the property, to solidify criteria for historic designation. When the new owner touted preservation, we as a collective neighborhood went on about our lives. Unfortunately, it was our shared apathy that was taken advantage of and has brought us to where we are today. Shame on us for not paying attention to everything that followed. Be assured we're paying attention now. We've seen a litany of continuances, experienced a misrepresentation made by multiple attorneys employed and dismissed by the owner, and daily we live with political tactics fostering the arrogance with which the property owner uses residentially zoned land as a public venue. The David and Gladys Wright home is deceptively portrayed to the community as already having a landmark designation.
I apologize to catch up, but really, the issue today is a continuance.
I know. It's about the continuance, and she's talking about it in here, and she asked me to read it, so I'm just reading what she said, instead of editing what she said.
All right, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, please.
Thank you. We are no longer ambivalent. We will be vigilant in our fight against expansion of anything beyond the preservation of the house. I'd like to thank the city staff for their recommendation of continuance. We are united in support of an eighth continuance of this application, only to prevent a public event center being constructed, complete with a concert arena by any name, amphitheater, shade structure, or circular terrace landscape garden, anticipated to allow large number of tourists and visitors to our residential streets and private homes. Be assured the homeowners are unified and expect our neighborhood to be preserved. We're asking each of you to honor the residents of Arcadia and voters of Phoenix that elected you. To confirm, we are in support of the eighth continuance and undivided in our opposition to expand the original application beyond the 2.45 acres. The residents would like to maintain reasonable expectations. You will do what's in the best interest of Arcadia community and not a sole property owner, Tracy Wattis.
Thank you very much. Thanks for doing that. Mary O'Grady, do you wish to provide testimony? Are you in favor of the continuance? Thank you. Andy Ogan, do you wish to provide testimony? Followed by Nancy Julian, again, only testimony on the issue about whether we should move forward with a continuance today. Oh, and then Sue Bloom, you'll be next. I apologize if you're standing there.
Hi, Andy Ogan, 5225 Exeter Boulevard. I guess I'm in support of the continuance. I'd like to lose the L. Like to lose the L, and I think that solves a lot of the problems. But I guess, are they going to run this parallel, the six acres, parallel to, while this thing's on ice for a few months, or, I guess I got to get a little educated about that, but I guess I'll echo in what a lot of people are saying, let's lose the L. Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming down. Ms. Bloom?
Hi, I'm Sue Bloom with Arcadia Community Association, and we had a meeting a couple weeks ago with over 500 Arcadia homeowners, residents, standing room only. This neighborhood is not for this project. We're not for commercialization at all. I guess we'll support the continuance if that's what you want to do. It will just give us time to have 2,000 people at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gail Andrews, do you wish to provide testimony? Are you in favor of continuance? And Nancy Julian, if you wish to provide testimony, you'll be next, again, on the issue only of a continuance. Ms. Andrews?
Yes, hello. My name is Gail Andrews. I reside at 5506 East Cayenne Camellia, lifetime resident of Arcadia. Thank you for the continuance on this matter. As Sue said, it will give us time to continue to get the word out so that it's properly in a balance for the neighborhood. And in that respect, I do ask City Council to please kindly respect the integrity of our neighborhood and to strike a right balance as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Julian, do you wish to provide testimony on the proposed continuance? Followed by Ms. Cahodas?
My name is Nancy Julian. I'm at 3807 North 55th Place. I've lived in Arcadia for 50 years, and I vote for the continuance. I do want to say, I just want the HP, not the HPL. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cahodas?
I agree with the continuance, but I really oppose the commercialization, and I'm so willing and I want to work with the example.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. The camera couldn't pick it up, but she favors the continuance and appreciates what Ms. Andrews had testified to. I have many other cards not wishing to speak. I'll make sure they get submitted for the record. Mr. Leonard Clark, are you going to provide testimony on this one? Are you in favor of continuance?
I'm in favor of continuance.
Okay. Did anyone else wish to speak on the issue of continuance? I believe I'm out of cards on that item. So we have a motion to continue to March 2nd. We have a second on that item. Any members of the council wish to speak on that? Councilman DeCicchio, please.
Just if I could, Mayor, and I do want to thank everybody for coming out today. I know how difficult it is to take time out of your day, out of your life to do this, but this is an important issue. It's a neighborhood issue. It is something that's been critical to those individuals who have been working hard. Everybody wants that home preserved. Everybody. I don't know anyone who says, "Tear it down." That's just been something that's been out there. It's been fostered. I've never heard anybody say, "Tear that home down." Matter of fact, the neighborhood has been very accommodating. Just if you look at what happened today on the continuance, the neighborhood, after eight continuances, after repeated requests by myself, by individuals who represent the neighbors, to try to get a meeting, we have our first meeting after months of work and trying to get at it. I think that they probably were embarrassed, coming to a council meeting, not having a meeting set up on the developer end of it. But the neighborhood has been trying repeatedly. If you heard what they said today, they are the ones that were looking to this so that we could have this meeting, have this meeting to find out what's going to be happening with the rest of the community. So the home, just to be very clear, there is no threat of demolition of this home. I want to make sure that that gets off the table. The home is already preserved. You have, an individual has already said repeatedly that he will not tear the home down. So the whole idea, the whole concept of it being torn down is illogical. The home is already preserved. The home is already viable, as it is. The individual has enough wherewithal to be able to buy properties around you. You've got enough, you know, you've got the ability to be able to run the home yourself. It is a home, no different than anyone else's home, but it does have some significance that this council and others want to make sure that we preserve. And that doesn't mean it has to be commercialized. So I want to just cover a couple of things. I want you to look, I want everybody in here to look at the size of this room. Look at the size of this room. It's 4,500 square feet. I want you to visualize, in your neighborhood, a room almost six times bigger than this. This is what he wants to bring in to a neighborhood. 26,000-square-foot meeting room in your neighborhood, six times bigger than this room right now. I got the numbers. It's 4,500 square feet in here. I just wanted to make sure, so that people can look around and visualize that. Is this something that you think is, this is, as we're moving forward, this is something that we need to acknowledge and understand, what the size of the thing is that people are asking for? A 40-foot amphitheater in your backyard? Would any of us feel that that's a problem when it comes to the commercialization? We want to sit down with the developer. We want to find out what their intentions are, what they're looking to do. But at the end of the day, we've got two designations moving forward. You have an HP, and you have the actual plan of what they want to have done. We've got to be able to see all of that in order to be able to judge the whole package. Now, what developers do at a lot of times, they try to delay it, try to make sure that they pull it back, try to get one thing done first and the other. It's going to be real important, we're able to see the entire package as a package. It's going to be very important that we get individuals in the room, being able to sit down so that not one person's being told one thing, and another is being told another. Everybody's told the same story at the same time. That's why it's been critical, and why we've been working months to get this meeting that's going to occur on April 27. So I just want you to visualize what we're talking about and what's happening in a neighborhood. You're talking even about visitors, that they've actually acknowledged 100,000 more visitors than what goes to the Royal Palms. 100,000 more in a neighborhood. So these are the things that we're going to be discussing as we're moving forward on this continuance. But it's something that's going to require the developer to lay out their plans. They've been pretty secretive of exactly what they're going to be doing yet, but it's going to be important for them to lay it all out there as we're moving both of these items together. So I'm very proud of what the neighborhood was willing to do, again, that they've been very appreciative, and I think it's important that the developer put on the record that they were in favor of a continuance of a city-initiated ordinance, because it's important for them, because they fought it so hard up front. They literally, they sent us a scathing letter saying it needed to be withdrawn, and today they're asking for a continuance. Tells us a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you for doing that. But at the same time, remember, you are continuing a city-sponsored ordinance. And for that, Mayor, I'm done, and appreciate all the work that everybody's done on this. Looking forward to those meetings. It's time that we have these meetings. It's unfortunate it's taken so long. Needs to happen sooner than later. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman DeCicchio. We have a motion, we have a second on a continuance. Any other comments by members of this council? All in favor, oh, Councilwoman Pastore, please.
I'm just hoping that both parties can come together and have a dialogue. This has been continued long enough, and I think this will be the last continuation, and we will have to make a final vote. And bottom line for me is that both parties come together. If the councilman's in the meeting or not, there needs to be dialogue. And I hear from both parties that one doesn't want to meet, the other one doesn't meet. This is what, I think, right now, we just go into a closed-door office room and have a discussion, and see what comes out, and then the final end, we can see where we land. But I'm highly encouraging that to happen.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone, for coming down. Next item on the agenda is item 87. Item 87 is proposed rezoning at 133rd Avenue and Campbell. Vice Mayor, it's in your district. How do you wish to proceed?
Motion to continue to November 18th.
We have a motion and a second. David Hall, David, are you here?
Yeah.
I apologize if a lot of people stand up. Where are you? David Hall? Are you okay with the continuance?
I don't see it.
All right. Silence is affirmation. We have a motion for a continuance. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passing unanimously. So we now go back to our regular agenda. Do we have an omnibus motion on ordinances, resolution, and new business?
Yes, Mayor. Motion to approve items 31 to 72.1, except the following items: 31, 36, 44, 48, 49, 50, and 56, 65, and 66. Items 32 and 59 have been withdrawn, and excluding these items for public comment. We already have 31, but 36, 43, 45, 47, and 61. To clarify, the withdrawn item is 32 AC.
All right. We have a motion, omnibus motion.
Second.
We have a second?
That's being held out.
All right.
31? Yeah, that's being held out for comment.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCicchio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Dalenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor?
31. Motion to approve item 31. We do have a card on that.
All right, so we're now on to item 31. Is that correct? Okay, we have a motion. In favor, wait, first, did the city clerk read the title already? Okay, so let me do that first. So the city clerk, please read the title on item 31.
Item 31, ordinance G6041, and ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Phoenix City Code by amending Section 2-25 and Section 2-26 pertaining to recovery of collections and lien costs.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do we, oh, Councilwoman, did you have a comment before Vice Mayor puts a motion on the table?
Yeah, I'll get that.
I think there is already a motion, but I might either offer a substitute, I'll offer a comment, and then maybe the Vice Mayor might want to...
Okay.
Is there a motion on the table? Okay, so I think the Vice Mayor then, maybe an edit to your motion.
Right. Would you like me to do that first?
Please.
Or would you like to?
Maybe I'll do a comment, and then...
Okay, sure.
So item 31 is cost recovery of liens. It's an opportunity for the city to pursue more collection of a wide variety of items for which we have not been paid, including some related to tax collection. The Councilman Gates's subcommittee did review it, and there is one suggestion that I want to offer, and I think there may be others, on to how to improve this. Many of them are items where people owe taxes, and I think we need to go forward and recover our costs as we collect those. There is one item related to ambulance fees, and I'd asked staff to look further into that, and they said that people who are not paying our ambulance fees, in general, the most common group was people 45 to 65 who used an ambulance once. For some individuals, the cost related to an ambulance is quite expensive, and so as they recover that cost, and I do think the city should recover our costs, but tacking on additional fees to people who are already probably in difficult financial circumstances, I don't think is helpful, so I would ask the Vice Mayor in the motion if we could just leave the ambulances out of this step forward at this time.
Okay, so I've been requesting a friendly amendment to the motion, which would be to keep ambulance service, at least at this time, keep ambulance service out of our debt collection process, at least as it relates to penalties. Is that correct?
So we would continue to collect, but not add additional fees on top of it? And I think that would make it maybe even more likely we would recover, but also not keep adding to people who are probably already suffering from a lot of bills related to medical.
Vice Mayor, do you accept that friendly amendment?
I do.
And anything else to add?
Yeah, there's something, so I want to restate the motion.
Actually, I'm the second, and I don't.
Okay. We'll have to figure this one out, then. All right. So we had thrown a motion on the table, but I think the Vice Mayor did not read his original motion correctly, as he intended. So I'm looking at our city attorney. There was a second on the original errant motion. Does he get another bite at the apple?
Mayor, yes, he does. As the maker of the motion, he can go ahead and amend it, and then it would be up to the second to decide whether or not they wish to second it. So the maker always has, reserves the right to amend the motion.
Okay. And I guess I would request, as you do that, if you wanted to include the request that Councilwoman Gallego had made in that motion, we'll see if the second will accept it or not. My guess is probably not, and we'll see if there's then a, someone else that may want to second that motion. Vice Mayor?
Motion to amend Phoenix City Code, Chapter 2, to add language relating to the recovery of the cost of collections and lien fees, to add additional verbiage to the final demand letters to inform the debtor to contact the city within 10 days to avoid being liable for the additional costs charged by the collection agency. In addition, to leave out ambulance, to exclude the ambulance fees as part of this effort.
Okay.
Did I just, did I state that fairly?
Mayor?
No, no.
I think the motion... I think the motion would be, we would still collect the ambulance fees, but we would not tack on additional costs.
Of course, of course, that's what I meant.
All right, so the issue is, keep the original motion, but not do penalties for ambulance service, and then in addition, what the Vice Mayor just added relative to some notice language to citizens of Phoenix. Councilwoman Williams, you were the original second of the motion, you had some comments, and you decided whether you want to accept that or not.
Well, I understand the intent of this, but there are some that still can pay, and I'm wondering if you could change the verbiage to "you may be subject to," and then if the staff receives a letter or information within the 10 days that it is beyond their capacity to pay, that then staff can then waive any collection fee.
Okay, and so the, I think, I guess my understanding of your request would be that sort of do a means testing process to figure out who has the ability to pay. I asked about this in a meeting, I'll turn to our staff, but I think that they feel that a means testing process would be so cumbersome and time-consuming, and that it would eat up whatever savings we're going to gather here, but let them speak for themselves. Mr. City Manager, maybe you can as well.
Okay, well, then, Mayor, let me ask you the question. Are you talking about just the age group that the Councilwoman mentioned, or for everyone who uses an ambulance?
Well, I think the rationale that the Councilman used for why ambulance service should be excluded is because her understanding from staff reporting to her was that so many of the individuals who would be subject to the fee are in a certain age group and only have used the ambulance service once, and are not in a position to pay, and that if we did, actually did a means testing process, it would be so cumbersome as to not be workable. So we have to make a decision, essentially, are we going to include ambulance service or not include ambulance service? And obviously, there's significant implications either way. Mr. Manager, I don't want to speak for you or your team.
Mayor, I would just, so my understanding of the motion would be that we would add the collection, cost of collection, to everything except the ambulance fee, and we would make clear in our letters to people before it goes to collection that they have hit a point at which if they don't call us to set up a plan to pay or pay in full, they're going to be subject to that fee. Mayor, you are correct, the ability of staffs to do means testing does not exist, and we don't have staff to do that, we're not qualified to do that. It would be better not to add the fee to the ambulance than to try and means test for the ambulance.
Okay, so based upon that, Councilwoman Williams, you have decided, whether you originally said you would not be accepting of the excluding ambulance service. If you don't, that's fine, we just have to find, see if someone else wants to second the motion.
I'm not going to second the motion.
All right, fair enough.
Mayor, I have some clarification I want to ask.
Well, first, let me see if there's a second on the motion, at least have a...
Second.
We do have a second on the motion. Councilman Noakowski.
Basically, if there's, a person has an option of doing payments, right? So if you can't afford to pay the $1,000, let's say, for the ambulance fee, you can go into a payment plan. So if you don't complete that payment plan, that's when you're sent to collection, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Councilman Gates, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know, so of the, you know, I know this, I'm not sure if you were prepared for this or not, but of the, you know, total amount of fees that we're having to go after every year, what percentage of those are ambulance fees?
Mayor, members of the council, that amount dollar-wise is about 13 million for ambulance transportation fees, and that's probably a third of the total collections, outstanding past due collections for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Just a comment, and I, you know, obviously made the motion on the amendment, and I think it's a great suggestion offered. There are a lot of people who are, it's a life and death situation. People aren't choosing to be, to involve themselves in such emergencies that would require an ambulance ride, and many times, it's happening to people who just, who can't afford it in the first place. I will tell you, as a firefighter responding, we are taking people to the hospital because they have no other way of getting there. They don't have a vehicle, they don't live with someone with a vehicle, they can't call someone who can take them, and frankly, even if they could, it's a life and death situation many times, and, you know, we either can't let them drive or have someone drive them. So I think that there's, you know, I think it's a great idea to exclude the additional fees for this, and I think we just have to sort of think of those types of circumstances when voting for this motion.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Councilman Noakowski, Chair of Public Safety.
Mayor, I can make a suggestion, is that if we can bring this portion of the fees to public safety, so we can actually go into more debt, more detail, and figure out what the percentages are, and what the needs are, and if we can come up with some kind of a plan for the future, I would support this 100 percent.
Okay, so the request is that if we were to exclude ambulance service today, that at least that particular item comes before our sub, maybe learn a lot more, whatever detail we can get into, exactly who this population is, any information we can get upon them, or get about them, so that we can make a decision about whether we want to bring it back and add. We can always bring it back and add at a later time. The request is just as of today, we don't include the ambulance service. Okay, any other comments or questions? Councilman Gates, please.
So, you know, what I'm hearing here from staff is that if this motion passes, we'll still have 2/3 of the fees that are now, and let's be very clear what's going on right now, these fees that the city is incurring to go collect these payments are being paid for by the taxpayers. In fact, just a few weeks ago, we, as a council, approved, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, if you recall the full amount, but...
I think it was in the range of about $60,000 of payments to collection agencies on the one, on one payment ordinance.
Yes, so $60,000 of taxpayer money that was spent to track down people who owed money to the city. So I'm pleased to see that we're making this, you know, we're going to now have the opportunity to go after 2/3, and then this goes in front of public safety, coming up with, you know, an approach that makes sense. I, you know, I would prefer that we cover the full amount at this point, you know, because I think that the argument might almost prove too much, because if we shouldn't be going after them for the attorney's fees, maybe we shouldn't be going after the fees at all. But that's a discussion that can occur in public safety. But again, thank you for all the work that you've put into this, and we had a real good discussion in our subcommittee, and I will support this motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Roll call. DeCiccio. Oh, I'm sorry, Greta, you are correct, I apologize. Ms. Rogers, and then followed by Leonard Clark. Thank you very much. Up to two minutes.
Mayor and council, this item, based upon the questions that many of you have asked, tells me that you should have discussed this in executive session, and you did not. This is not a taxi cab fare we're talking about. This is complex financial matters. Fees of varying kinds that are owed by people who have used or been provided services by the city, and there is a cost involved. When you haven't done your homework, you haven't come here prepared, and I resent that as representatives of the people. The question I had on this, when I was reading through these narratives, is the cost of recovery of an item commensurate with the cost to be recovered? And if it isn't, write it off. You don't pay any taxes, you're exempt as a city. I had an ambulance ride here a few months ago. It was 165 to go from right here to St. Joe's. I didn't quibble, I don't think it was overpriced. It was a service that I needed at the time, because I fell and hit my head on the right angle of the railing up there. My fault, tripped over a chair leg, and I could afford it, and I paid it. But please, on these items that come before you, come prepared, and don't come here and do your homework in the council meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Just to make it clear, this probably would not have been an appropriate executive session-type item. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark, and while I'm actually, and I really respect the person that just spoke before me, I do disagree, I'm glad you are talking about it in public, because I don't like a lot of the stuff that we don't even know about that's talked about in executive session. But I understand you have to look at both sides, the taxpayers who are paying, but if you're going to pay more than, like the former speaker said, than what you're paying the collection agencies, because these collecting agencies are just out of control. And basically, since we don't have a single payer health system, and we charge people exorbitant rates, like my one friend paid $900 to be moved from one parking lot to the next with an ambulance, so I just feel that some good points were brought up, especially for our elders, our elderly citizens. I just think that it's always best, when you have a chance to err on the side of pure numbers and kindness, and I say way on the side of kindness. And I know that hardcore businesspeople say that's not the best approach, but I believe that showing mercy is better than just callously charging people exorbitant fees for collection agencies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Councilman Warren, question?
Just for our city staff, we cannot write off our debt, right?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, that's correct.
So we can't do what the previous speaker suggested?
Yes, it's part of the Arizona Constitution that we cannot forgive debt.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor?
I apologize, the card came in too late, so we're moving on.
We have a very, very busy agenda, and people are here on citizen comment at the end, they want to have the opportunity to speak to this council. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve item 36.
Oh, City Clerk, will you tie on 36 and with the motion, I apologize.
Item 36, ordinance number G6065, and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code, Chapter 2, Article 2, Rules of Council Proceedings, Rule 2A pertaining to meetings. Mayor?
Councilwoman Williams, do you want to make a motion on 36?
I do, but for us to be consistent, could we change that to 230 instead of 3? I think we all can...
The motion is to... Move or approve with recommendation, but sit at start at 2:45, start our meetings at 2:30.
Correct.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Do you have any comments on that proposal? This would start our formal meetings of the city council, consistent with policy at 2:30, with the first 15 minutes being citizen comment.
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve item 43.
We have a motion on 43? Do we have a card on 43? Mr. Clark, you have comments on item number 43?
I would like to say, Mayor, that I and another citizen did put down for item 36, so I'm not sure if there's some special city rule that we couldn't speak, even though you voted on it already.
Were there cards on 36? Okay, you may speak on 36, because it was a, it was not handed to me.
I know, accidents, I will say accidents do happen, I haven't...
36.
Okay, 36. Now, okay, 36, I was just concerned with the time limit, I'm just concerned that it wasn't exactly codified with the chair to be able to, you know, it's up to the discretion of the chair to carry on for the 15 minutes, and I'm just concerned, it's hard enough for citizens to speak. I know you already voted on it, but, as you know, I was in disagreement to that, and I'm not sure now if I should speak on 43 and let the others, I don't know how you want to do it, because the other citizen...
Yeah, all of the other citizens speak on 36, and I think the issue on giving the chair some discretion was actually to the benefit of the community, so it would give the chair the ability to hear additional people and not set an absolute hard deadline. So I think the idea was to make it to the benefit of you and other leading citizens who come here regularly.
Do I want to, do I sit down and let the others, or do I speak on this item?
No, why don't we have you sit down and speak on 43 in just a moment. Joanne Scott Woods, did you wish to speak on 36, which is the proposed council rules? Again, while you voted on it, if councilmembers do want to change their mind and reconsider, we certainly can.
Mayor Stanton, I need to know if this is an appropriate time to talk about this. I would like to have a discussion on moving council meetings to the evening, but I don't know if this is appropriate time to do it.
Yes, you would, because part of the item was to set the start time of the meeting to 2:45, it was changed to 2:30, so that would be an appropriate thing for you to testify on.
Okay, if we started at, I guess, 6:30 instead of 2:30, because I know last time there was concern by the public and by the city council people and yourself about the inconvenience for councilmembers to have an afternoon starting time when they had to be on time for events following that day, and also, there were so many councilmembers that were distracted by the excessive numbers of citizens speaking at the close of the formal meeting when they had to get elsewhere, and in the evening, start time would add more flexibility and time for listening to public comments on both business items during the meeting and those on concerns not on the agenda, both at the beginning and closing of the meeting. And it is inconvenient for citizens in respect that workday activities and commitments interfere with attendance when there's an afternoon formal meeting, and there's no guarantee that those signing up may be able to speak that day, and so very few of the million-and-a-half residents, I figured it out to be .00004 will be heard, and I felt that this change should be put on the ballot, and I would like it to be in the evening where more citizens will have the right to speak, and to close on the citizens' time, omits all citizens' points of view being heard, and obviously, citizens can't reschedule their lives to accommodate the workday scheduled, a workday scheduled formal meeting.
Thank you very much for that testimony. I think the point I was trying to make when this issue came up last time is that there was a suggestion that somehow councilmembers did not want to listen to public testimony, and the point I was making was, in most cases, the reason why councilmembers would have to leave is to go to community events so that they can listen to the community...
I know.
And often with very large numbers of people who are there to testify on a neighborhood issue, or a neighborhood meeting, or a town hall, or where the... So the councilmembers weren't attempting to not listen to the community, in fact, I think it was just the opposite. If they were here, and they weren't able to be out in the community, they would be at a more convenient location for people to provide testimony. So there was a balancing of interests, and that was the reason why.
Yeah, but I think that if we had an evening meeting, there wouldn't be that conflict that they would have.
That is a good point, although it'd be one less evening that the councilmembers could be in the community at neighborhood meetings, meeting with neighborhood leaders, et cetera, which is an important part of elected office. Reverend Walton is next to provide testimony on 36. Is he still here? He had a go? He was opposed to the proposal. Okay, Mr. Clark, now would be the time to provide testimony on item number 43.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. I really do approve of the AARP helping... I really do approve of the AARP helping go into our school districts. But I just want to say, even though I always like it when private enterprise tries to help, it just is, to me, I know you can't say it or won't say it, but it's a pitiful comment on Arizona's public education funding system because my conservatives' friends say, "Oh, you're just throwing money at it, you can't cure the problem." Well, you don't have any money being thrown at it. We are being hurt currently. Our school districts are in Phoenix, the city of Phoenix, Phoenix Union High School, Phoenix Elementary School District, because our legislature is forcing the local entities to raise the funding that they should be doing. So I do thank AARP for doing that. I hope you'll vote for this, but again, just shows what we have to do. Sorry if my conservative friends disagree. We are last, almost dead last in funding below Mississippi. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Councilman Gallego, you had a comment on this proposed partnership with Experience Corps?
Yes. District 8 schools have already been the beneficiary of the wonderful work of Experience Corps. Really want to thank our senior citizens for spending time with one-on-one reading. And I'm very excited that many schools, districts throughout Phoenix, including several in District 8, may have the potential to be part of this in the future. Councilwoman Pastor and I are working very closely on the My Brothers Keeper Challenge, and third grade literacy is one of the areas where we've been challenged to make improvements. So I think AARP can be an important partner as we move forward in that area.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I would just say, Mr. Clark, the point well made about additional resources for our schools, but regardless of how well-resourced our schools are, getting experienced folks, people who have had incredible lives already, retired folks into our schools and providing not just that reading one-on-one help, but just to be a mentor and teach life experiences, it changes that child's life. And we'll be announcing very soon some numbers from our current Experience Corps programs for those students that have been the beneficiary of that one-on-one tutoring. The results really are spectacular, and it's a, who can disagree that one-on-one reading help by someone that has had great life experience isn't an awesome thing in our public schools. All right, any other comments on 43? Councilwoman Pastor, please.
I really would like to thank the volunteers that dedicate the time to mentor and coach young students in getting involved in reading and understanding the concept or the practices, the phonetics that is needed in to learn how to read, because once you learn how to read, it opens up the door for many. And it discover, this discovery of reading and dreaming happens within that timeframe. The results of this program are definitely demonstrated and show the fact that we have doubled in obtaining one of our goals of making sure that by third grade they have reached literacy. So those results will be forthcoming in the future, but this program has made a strong impact.
Thank you very much for your leadership. Okay, roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item 44? You have motion 44?
Motion to approve item 44.
We have a motion, we have a second. Councilwoman Pastor will take a, I guess, a technical conflict is the only way to describe it, only because she is a leader of a region-wide effort called Opportunities for Youth in partnership with McKesha and most of the major players in the area of opportunity youth. So I think the recommendation was she added abundance of caution, not voting on this item, but only because of her leadership position in the community. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item passes eight to zero. Item 48?
45.
45.
Motion to approve item 45.
A motion, we have a second. Ms. Rogers, did you have testimony on 45? This is the amend lease with Level 3 Communications LLC.
Mayor and council, I checked this only because I need a point of clarification.
Okay.
It's my understanding the city owns this building. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, that is correct.
And that FAC, Family Advocacy Services, occupies the second and third floors?
Mayor, that is correct.
And the first floor has recently been given to Child Help USA to occupy.
Mayor, that is not correct. The second floor is a combination of Child Help, Children's Advocacy Center, and the Phoenix Police Department, and multiple other partners. The third floor is the Family Advocacy Center. This is on the first floor, and there are a series of legacy leases for telecommunications groups like this one.
Okay, thank you. I didn't understand the complexity of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve item 47.
We have a motion, do we have a second on 47?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on 47. Item 47, of course, is the resolution endorsing the main elements of the Phoenix Industrial Development Authority's 2015-16 Plan. I would actually ask that there be a friendly amendment to the motion, that in addition to the items presented by the IDA team, that we also ask the IDA to track and report back to the city council when they do their regular report to the city council, jobs created, local jobs created as a result of their investments, wages of those jobs, information about the location of those jobs, and then estimated revenues to the city as a result of those projects. Would the maker of the motion accept that?
Second.
Yes.
And with a second as well?
Yes.
Greta Rogers, you provide testimony on the issue of the proposed Phoenix IDA work plan. And then also provide testimony is Leonard Clark. And Don Cuth and Sal Rivera, members of the IDA, are both here in favor. And you didn't wish to speak, but I don't know if the friendly amendment is something you want to speak to as well.
Mayor and council, I listened to John Salgado's presentation on the IDA program at the subcommittee meeting a couple of months ago. This is, this is a program that provides constructive progress for this city in housing, in businesses, in jobs. It is the greatest value to this city in the years that it's been a part of us, greater than any of the combination of our departments who address these areas of employment and economic development, housing, and neighborhood improvement. And we don't spend one tax dollar. This is government-funded. We do, in essence, because our income taxes go to the government, federal government I'm talking. John Salgado has done a champion's work in this area for this city since he came here and IDA became a part of the functioning of the city of Phoenix. Be glad you have it and treat it with utmost respect. Thank you.
John, how'd you do that? No, the nicest thing she's ever said. Thank you, Greta, for that testimony. Leonard Clark, up to two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and you guys get to watch me talk super fast because I only get two minutes. God forbid someday I get 10 minutes. We're all... But here's the point.
10 minutes total per meeting?
Well, we'd have to talk that one over, Mayor Stanton. But hey, again, now I've come to the party again, I'm going to spoil the party here. But unfortunately, while I really, really like the people on the IDA board, community people, they do a great service for the thing. It's, my problem is not with them. They're doing what they're being asked to do. You know, not-for-profit hospitals, these types of projects, this type of thing. My thing right now is the current emergency situation with school funding in the state of Arizona. As you all know, here in the city of Phoenix and around the state of Arizona, many school districts are desperately pleading with the parents and retirees all around, "Please, we need approval for more funding," because the legislature, and I know you'll disagree on that, some of you, the legislature's not providing it. We just had the huge budget battle earlier with our great esteemed governor, and now we don't have enough. We're below Mississippian funding. My only problem is your point in the policy part about helping charter schools, the education part. Public schools, and I'm not sure, I'm not a lawyer, our lawyers might say, "Well, Leonard, Mr. Clark, let's find a way." But I haven't found one yet. Charter schools can come to you, nine members, get $100 million, which is, the IDA just examined Basis Charter School, getting that, $100 million in sweet tax-free bonding. I'm sorry, the bankers love it, because the tax-free part, there's money to be made. So I, as a parent, you know, or a member, or my friends who live out on Dykart School District, or whatever city, they can't go to their local city council. I can't come from Phoenix Union High School District and say, "Mayor, tell your IDA board $100 million for Phoenix Union High School District and Phoenix El..." No, you can't do that because, and rightly so, democratically so, the parents, the school boards have to go to the parents, the parents who elected them. But with the, with Basis and the charter schools, and nothing specific against Basis, but all the charter schools, they just come to you, nine members, because the IDA recommends to you that they get $100 million, which is probably going to be the next thing. And they've gotten over $1.5 billion, these charter schools. I'm sorry, it's not fair. Let the public schools come to you. Change the Constitution for that, but that is unfair, and it's not right. Our school districts are calling out for public funding, and you could stand as leaders and do that. You won't, but that's why I'm not the politician. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Councilman?
A couple of questions for staff. First off, I think when we had the last discussion on IDA, there was a lot of promising progress with one district school in particular, and wanted to see if that's still something. It looks like district schools are going to be a big part of the upcoming year.
Mayor, Councilman Gallego, I'm going to ask Juan Salgado, Executive Director of the IDA, to answer your question.
Mayor, Councilman Gallego, would you please repeat your commoner question I was watching at?
It looks like district schools in Arizona might be a bigger part of the upcoming year.
Yes, we've been in conversations with district schools about the possibility of seeking IDA revenue bonds.
Wonderful. And you sort of have talked to us in the past about the IDA goes where the market is. What's your thoughts on where the market is right now?
In terms of what?
What's the appetite? Who would like to partner with the IDA?
Well, there is a great appetite for school financing at this point. And it's meant at least our experience in the near future, and we'll see some more schools coming forward. We're speaking right now to a district school that could appear before the council later this year.
Wonderful, very exciting. And in terms of our marketing priorities, where we're going out to look for deals, priorities for this year would be, in particular, the new manufacturers program?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Gallego, in the report that is presented to you right now as it relates to bond financing, our priorities earlier to continue, or at least to seek more financing with health facilities. We've just initiated a new initiative with Alliance Bank and Community Economic Development to focus on manufacturing financing. In fact, we expect our first transaction to come before you, hopefully in November.
Something to look forward to. And we got an inquiry from a councilman in the East Valley who was trying to understand the relationship with the IDA and the city of Phoenix. How often do we work with other elected officials in the area?
I'm sure I understand your question.
An East Valley councilman had been approached about doing a transaction with the IDA.
Was it with us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We don't have any communication with the local elected officials at this point. We do work sometimes with staff or local, their local IDAs.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Pastor?
Juan, you had mentioned school financing. That's the area. What type of school financing? What type of schools are we speaking of?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, as you've seen, I guess, from our past experience, we've been involved in financing universities, private schools, and public schools, of which public schools obviously include charters at this point. We've done a couple of district financings. Our first one was with Higley about two years ago, and since then, we've continued to explore opportunities. And at the suggestion of the mayor, we created a financing model that we think will work better for district schools, at least to offer an alternative to their current geo-bond capacity. So we'll continue to seek that and at least provide them an opportunity to seek alternative financing, such as what they have today.
And is this an alternative to the geo-bond because bonds, public schools are unable to get bonds through the voters?
The alternative that they will have is that the district schools will have the opportunity, as they have, to seek financing from IDAs, as Higley did. It's just a matter of choice whether the school board chooses to pursue that avenue. But they, this type of financing is available to them.
And then, I just lost it. It was the geo-district financing charter. I have it written right here. What type of financing did we do with the universities?
The university financing, I think the last one we did was with Roan University, where we financed a bookstore and, I believe, student housing. And so we, that was about $180 million, about two years ago, three years ago.
Okay, and this is my last question. My last question is, there are other IDA, there's a county IDA, there's a Tempe IDA, I think there's the Scottsdale IDA. And what I am noticing in our packaging is that those that are applying could also apply to other IDAs. And so my question is, why do they continue to come to Phoenix when they can also apply to Tempe and Scottsdale and Tucson, where the other IDAs jurisdictions are, or even in their own state? So what's, why is it so advantageous for them to go through Phoenix?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, there are about 40-some IDAs throughout the state of Arizona. Local counties and cities have had the opportunity to establish those. There's a handful of IDAs in the state that are active. And so over the last few years, we've been probably the most active issuer of private activity bonds. A large appetite for applicants coming to the IDA is because of the professional staff that we have dedicated to understand the complex transactions that come before us. And obviously, also, the applicants recognize that the mayor and council have been very supportive of the issues that we've come forward. And so it is a choice that they have, but because, again, the complex of some of the transactions, particularly where there are multi-jurisdictions or multi-state, very few have the capacity that we do to be able to understand the complex transactions.
Any other questions?
No, what I'm hearing is that other IDAs don't have professional staff. That's what I, that's how I interpret that. And so that's concerning to me.
I think the reality is that Phoenix, Maricopa County, and probably Pima County have been the most active IDAs in the state. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate. And applicants have choices, you know, they, in fact, there are several issuers right now interested in pursuing a lot of the same applicants that are coming to us that do have the capacity. But I do not mean to infer that they do not have professional staff. In regards to the dedicated personnel that we offer for these types of transactions, I would like to think that they get the best service coming through the Phoenix IDA.
All right. Any other questions? I would just add on the issue of the public education one. I think certainly it is the case, if school districts are not successful, there's an upcoming election on this issue, are not successful passing particularly their bonds, that the public education finance model that the IDA has created, I know Lawrence Robinson from my staff was very active with you in helping to create this model, which was requested by myself and probably other members of the council, I think you're going to see a lot more school districts utilizing that model. They have to provide the service to their students, and they're going to be pushing the envelope a little bit. I think it's the right thing because to be able to use this financing model to support our traditional public schools that may not be able to finance another way is a very important service. And I'm looking forward to getting some of the school districts I know you're talking to before this council. I think it'll be a very exciting thing. Councilman DeCiccio, you had comments?
Yeah, I was basically going to reiterate some of that, Mayor. Thank you for bringing that up. It's important that we find and work on the education end of it for all... It's important that we find and work on the education end of it for all schools. It's hard, though, when you're talking about the public schools, only because they're required to go through the bonding, and their bonds are a lot cheaper, and monetarily, it's a lot less expensive for them to be able to get it, it just becomes more difficult for them to either choose something that's going to be pricier or not. And then, you know, it's just going to be more difficult as you move into that, and those models will be developed out as they start coming up with new and creative ideas. One of the things about the IDA that I think is critical is that it is an infusion of dollars into an economy. So, whether it's coming here or anywhere else, I mean, it is an infusion of, of dollars into this economy, and I think it is critical. I mean, it's been important, though, too, with the charter schools, I want to make sure we keep that focus to allow those non-traditional schools to be able to take advantage of low financing because they've never been able to do that before, and it's still not as low as traditional schools would get, it just isn't, only because there's that gap. I mean, it's just, bonds are just going to be a lot cheaper at the end of the day than an IDA type of funding. The other entity that does quite a bit of this, I believe, is Florence, Penal County. They do quite a bit of IDA funding. Now, you wouldn't think of that coming from Florence, but it is. They do quite a bit of funding through there. So, with Pima County, Maricopa County, Phoenix, Florence, I think we have the bulk, the bulk of it right there. But no, I do think that the work that you do has been fantastic. I know it's been a difficult struggle. Appreciate all your doing on it because those dollars are critical. They're critical, whether it's here or anywhere else in the country even, it is critical, they are critical dollars to help this country grow, and that's what this is, was all about. That's really what it was. It was literally about an infusion of dollars into an economy that allows that economic growth to occur. Thanks for everything you're doing on it.
All right, thank you very much. Any final comments? Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. Juan, thank you for all the great work you've done with the IDA, and want to especially congratulate your board. You have a very talented board and all that they've been able to accomplish. I think this was a really good exercise, both coming through the subcommittees and coming through the, to the full council, so that we all understand where you're headed, there aren't questions, and so, when we see these items moving forward, they're going to be consistent with this plan. And again, just a, a good reminder for us all that even, you know, these projects that are being done outside of the city of Phoenix are generating funds that are being used to support economic development within the city of Phoenix, and we, we can't lose sight of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right. Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item 48, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve item 48.
Second.
You have a motion and a second on 48. Councilman Noakowski, if you'd just make comments on item 48?
I have some questions for staff.
Please.
Basically, the questions are simple, you know, we amended this agreement several times now, and I just want to make sure that we have some type of insurance that we're going to complete it, and if there's a sunset period during this agreement.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, we do, and I'm going to ask John Chan to walk through the detail of that for you.
Councilman, under, under the terms of the agreement, the Phoenix Suns would be required to make the improvements to the historic Sunmark and Tail Building by the end of calendar year 2016. If they do not perform the, they would be required to pay the city the equivalent value of those improvements.
And is there a sunset period? When's the sunset period?
The requirement to complete the improvements would be the end of 2016.
Okay. Any other comments? We have Maria Byer or Dan Costello representing the Phoenix Suns, if you'd write testimony, the, the motion's in favor.
All right.
Perfect. Okay. Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, I'm going to hand the meeting over to the Vice Mayor now, and I'll be appearing telephoned before the remainder of the meeting.
Thanks, Mayor. Next item is 49. We have a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilman Noakowski, do you have comments for this one?
Just some clarification because we've gotten some calls about this, is that we're talking about the valet, and individuals were asking if the city of Phoenix provides the cost for the police officers in the closing, of the closure of the roads.
Councilman, the, as part of the valet operations, the team is responsible for those costs. This item that staff is recommending speaks to the revenues that the city would be receiving as part of that operation, but the, the expenses are on the team.
And I just want to thank the Phoenix Suns for being such a great partner to the city of Phoenix, and just wanted to clear this up. We've gotten a couple of calls about that. Thank you.
Okay, we do have one card. Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
I'm sure the mayor will be joining us soon. Okay, item 50, I'm sorry? Okay.
Item 50, ordinance G6066, and ordinance amending chapter three of the Phoenix City Code by amending sections 3-8C pertaining to the Phoenix Convention Center event promotion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Do we have a motion for item 50?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have no cards. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stan.
Okay. All right, moving forward. Moving forward to item 56.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I have comments on this. This is a, one of the areas for needed, great needed improvement, and supportive of this. However, I want to start, speak about LED lighting, and the fact of, and I don't know if staff's here to talk about LED lighting, but I've been receiving calls and emails regarding LED lighting and the, the strength of the LED lighting and what it's doing within the environment, and also with our vision at night. And so, I would like to have this on the record of, of looking at this piece and looking at where we are placing LED lighting currently. I understand there are some on the preserve and some issues with, with the lighting at night and the natural habitat. And I have spoken to people from the autobahn industry area also having great concerns. So, I just wanted on the record that we will look at LED lighting and the different levels of, of the lighting.
Councilwoman Pastor, I'm Mario Ponjagua, Deputy City Manager, and with me here is Ray Dovellina, Street Transportation Director, and as we move forward with looking at LED lights and replacement of our street lights with LEDs, the, the provisions for dark skies and other environmental considerations will be part of what we review as we move forward with an RFP for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I think that covers it unless you have something, something else?
Vice Mayor, yes, sir.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second. No, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item 61, you have a motion for 61?
Move approval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. No cards on this, we do have, okay, we have two cards on this item. Ms. Diane Barker?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Valenzuela and, and City Council, Diane Barker, District 7. The history of the city has been that we've been a recipient of federal transit grants since 1975. We're asking now today 82 million, and the city will be getting less than half of that, 32 million, because we are the area's grant for transit. The 18 million is expected to come from Transit 2000 sales tax and Prop 400, that's the county regional fund, and it's all budgeted in the future. Just two years ago, we had less than half of what we were asking, 47 million out of this. So, where we can see, we're really expediting our program. In regards to Transit 2000, the bus has taken the backseat. We were promised in 2000, this is original paper, okay? This is, we're supposed to have service on every route seven days a week, and we're supposed to have 5:00 AM to midnight. I know of no bus to do that, but I can get on light rail. Now, let's tell the truth. Mr. Wolken, who started in Tempe, they got a tax, came here, he got skipper, and what Transit 2000 is, and the even latest 104, is first thing for light rail. All the propaganda, all of the studies and everything said that they wanted this. Light rail carries one-tenth of what the regional bus does. You have signed on with other localities, you're supposed to be working to cut down on particulates and, and air quali- make better air quality. The money from LTAF and this goes for air quality, but the air quality money, even at MAG, has been reconfigured in the latest project, should not, should go ahead at 16th and Indian School for that bus stop that's endangering the people and not give the money CMAC to light rail. And this is what I'm saying, we're looking now at the picture, now.
Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Now at the picture.
Thank you so much. Mr. Blue Crawley?
Dubtailing on what Ms. Barker had to say, 16th Street and Indian School. You're not taking care of it in the way that it should be. Part of the funding should be going to there to improve that, but that's not what's being done. I look at this and I go that we weren't able to speak on the prior item of 60 because of the transition from the Arcadia and that, I put my card in, and one of the things in that is, is the bus stop improvements, and then over on this side, we have bus and bus facilities formula, $5 million. Well, how many bus stops are going to be there? Zero. That bus and bus stop facilities is for park and rides, and you know what it costs for a park and ride space? The exact amount it does for a bus stop. So, instead of doing bus stops, and you already know that two-thirds of yours have no shelter at all, and I have spoke before on the health concerns of that for the citizens that use the bus, but I also noted in here the monies for the replacement buses and such, and I look back that we went and took $91 million and did what with it, Delta? We put that off for buses and bus repair. And what did we spend $91 million on? The rail. So, as the woman has stated, with your Prop 2000, with Prop 400, with the new monies that you've got coming in, you keep on saying the bus is what you're doing, but I look at this and I don't see it because, as I said on the 60, the one before, it says bus stops and improvements and repairs, but you don't have any bus stops that are going to be improved. You don't show that there, you don't say that we're going to be getting shelters. All that is, is repairing facilities that already exist, and then on the rest of it, where are those monies? I don't see any in here for bus stops.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. No, no more cards. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Can staff speak with Mr. Blue regarding his comments?
Okay, the next two items, 65 and 66, I can take in one motion noting that Councilman DeCiccio is declaring a conflict. You have a motion for 65 and 66?
I move 65 and 66 with Councilman DeCiccio having a conflict.
Potential conflict. I apologize, Councilman. Okay, do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Delta.
Okay. All right, we don't have any cards on this. Any questions or comments by my colleagues in the council? Hearing none. Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Yep, now, now time for the planning and zoning agenda.
Planning and zoning matters. Motion to approve items 73 through 88, except for 79, noting that items 78, 86, and 87 have already been acted on.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a card? None on those items. Okay. Roll call.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
Okay. The final item of the agenda, of course, I'm sorry, with the exception of citizens comment, item 79, do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. We do have one card. Mr. Bob Garrett?
Sir, I, is that the public comment?
Yes, sir.
No.
No, this is for item 79, sir.
Oh, I see.
Are you, are you Mr. Garrett?
I'm Winston Michael Ray.
Okay, no, we'll, we'll definitely get to the public comment here. Okay, so, I don't, I don't believe Mr. Garrett is still here.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any, any questions or comments by my colleagues in the council? All right, hearing none, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. We do have a public comment, which is the last item on the agenda. Now, this is... Now, according to the new rules, we do fifteen minutes prior, fifteen minutes after. If we can keep a quorum, I know that some of my colleagues may have other meetings that they have to probably get to as well. So we'll start with the first one. Winston Michael Ray.
First my obedience to Almighty God, Yah, who I appreciate for allowing me to be here today in this beautiful city. My name is Winston Michael Ray. And I was hoping the mayor would still be around, because I wanted to put a question directly to him, but I'm going to present that question to you as this distinguished body. I'm homeless. And I am the happiest homeless man in the United States, because the President and I will team up on November 2nd to end homelessness in America, stemming from a campaign entitled Operation Hobo, which is an acronym for Homeless Ones Barack Obama. Let me get to the meat of it. This is the question I want to put to the mayor. It's down to one man, a showdown, the mayor and I. The question that I'm putting to Mayor Greg Stanton, mayor of the city of Phoenix and really the entire body, I need to know if he is willing to stand with me, we can work out the details, on worldwide television, on what I dubbed as Movement Monday, November the 2nd, which is the 150th birthday of one of our illustrious presidents, Warren G. Harding. I read about him, Harding was something else. I have something for you regarding that. To proclaim that Phoenix, Arizona is the first city in the nation, in the world, to embrace, publicly embrace, the worldwide SILV, Silver Rights Movement. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to end America's CIVIL civil rights era on November 2nd, with or without the support. Now, this is what I need, everyone in this room, it's not just for the mayor, I need you to go throughout the community to tell everybody, there's a man in town who is in charge of a marketing campaign that will pay up to three thousand dollars of your stressed-out bills. We're talking money here, we're talking about marketing one hundred billion dollars worth of undeniable incontrovertible intelligence information. It's too long to try to explain in these two minutes, but I guarantee you, all of the experts agree it will work. We have no money problems. The Silver Rights Movement, which is really the poor people's campaign, has found its way to the presidential election, and I will make that announcement to the nation dressed like this, on November 2nd, that I will be a candidate for President of the United States of America, because I cannot trust the existing candidates to deliver the ending revenue segregation message to the people. We're not going anywhere. One billion people, I guarantee you, the marketing experts have all agreed, we sell a hundred dollars' worth of this per year, and that's a hundred billion dollars. Now, this is what I need. My cell number is area code 206-939-0797. Get a copy of this tape, share it with your friends. We only have twelve days. November 2nd, Warren G. Harding. This is on, you all get a packet, I've sent information to you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
I'm not Mr. Harding, I'm Winston Michael Ray, but...
I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
But I want you all to have a copy of this and let it be known that this is a two-edged sword, and it's telling the truth here. Now, it's just so much, I never get the kind of time I already want.
Mr. Ray, we'll go ahead and take the copies and we'll just ship it them.
Go ahead, flip-flop, flip-flop.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you so much.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Venezuela. As Vice Mayor, and then I'm going to close, will you be personally willing to support the worldwide civil rights movement and stand with us on November 2nd?
I'll ask my Chief of Staff to come over and speak with you. And I apologize, we have several cards and we're on, we have limited time and we have to be sure that we get to everyone. So I do appreciate you coming out, sir. Thank you. Thank you. All right, the next speaker, Jeff Woods.
Hello, council members and mayor, wherever you are. Everything I'm about to mention right now has happened within the last few months, or at least the last year. When I see officers arresting people for recording police misconduct, I question the officer's knowledge of citizens' rights. When I hear about an officer shooting a dog and an innocent bystander at a busy gas station in the middle of the day, I question the officer's training. When I hear about an officer stomping a defenseless teenager in face into the ground and being reinstated by the Internal Review Board, I question that review board. When I hear about an armed suspect shot and killed by police, I question if that person was actually armed. When I hear about an officer shooting an unarmed man in the back in front of his family on his front doorstep, and that officer never faces a jury, I question the police investigating themselves. When I read that from 2010 to 2013, Phoenix city employees killed more people per capita than any other city in the country, and that this year only Houston and LA have killed more people, I question the entire department from top to bottom. When the next tragedy occurs, and if the city council has not created a civilian review board with subpoena power, a use of restraint training program, education in citizens' rights, equipped all officers with body cameras, and all vehicles with dash cams, I will not question who I will be holding accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Next speaker, Robert Howarth. Next speaker, Joanne Scott Woods.
My name is Joanne Scott Woods. I am a coordinator for, co-coordinator of the People Demanding Action Community Coalition, and I am a representative for the family of Romaine Brisbane. I stand here today to ask you and the council to put emergency funding of body cams and dash cams citywide on next meeting's agenda, as our city is in a crisis, in particularly since 2010. From 2010 to 2013, according to the ACLU, we lead the nation in per capita killings of citizens by the police. Ironically, at the beginning of that same year in 2010, Councilman Michael Johnson began the formation of the City Managers Community Engagement and Outreach Task Force. Body cams were one of the thirty-four recommendations of that task force, and a study followed. Ironically, also in 2010, unarmed citizen, I mean Danny Rodriguez, was killed by Officer Richard Christman, who was on the Brady List. Fast forward to December 2nd, 2014, Romaine Brisbane, an unarmed black man was killed by Officer Mark Ryan. You and the council revisited these recommendations. We currently have a hundred and fifty officers out of approximately twenty-four hundred who wear body cams. The Public Safety and Veterans Committee Subcommittee meeting last week approved a second grant for more body-warm cameras, funded from October 1st, 2015, through September 30th, 2018. We have waited five years. Statistics have remained high. All citizens and officers do have the will to have transparency necessary for better Let's lead the nation in declining statistics. Please address this important and immediate means to do so at the next meeting. It is time.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker, Maria Rodriguez.
Good afternoon. I'm here because I'm part of Puente Movement and I'm here to speak about Prop 104 funds. So people are very concerned, the Prop 104 funds that are, we don't want them to be used, we don't want transit funds to be used for hiring more police, and the bus funds to be used for hiring more police. We think that there are people that are actually in need of those funds for the transit system. So people are scared and worried, because the police is collaborating with the sheriffs, and people in general are very distrusting, and the police is taking people to ICE. So Phoenix needs a lot of work in terms of its bus stops. You sometimes travel to other cities where transit is very nice, and here, we can't really say that. We know that a lot of maintenance is needed and a lot of bus stops and shelters are needed. I think there should be an open debate at this council about whether it's okay to use public transit funds to hire more police. We see a lot of cases where police are, they're punished, but they're punished or they're put on break, vacation with paid vacation essentially, and that's not okay. If anything, that the corrupt police, the police that have issues that haven't maybe gone through certain filters, they're the ones that need to be replaced and bring new personnel. But without taking public funds. Thank you.
Thank you. I allowed a little more time for the translation. It was definitely justified, I think. Next speaker, Francisca Porchas. Come on back.
Hi, my name is Francisca Porchas, and I am with Puente. I'm the organizing director. I'm here specifically to request, I assume, I don't know if the mayor's still on the phone or what, but specifically to request that the conversation, the proposal that he's put out around using the existing general funds, funds fund on transit to be used to hire more police, for that to actually be an open conversation at the city council. He announced it over a month ago. I haven't seen an agenda item at the city council, we've been watching. It hasn't been a discussion, there hasn't been a vote, it hasn't been a democratic process, and so we're just worried about, we're just, we want to actually weigh in. I haven't been the only one that's talked about concerns around transit. Somebody in the media told me that the communications person for someone here, or the mayor, I don't know, told them that that was actually an explicit explanation on the ballot, that sixteen million dollars would be raided from the transit funds to hire more police. I saw the ballot, I didn't see that, and I just reread the text for 104, that's not what it said, and so I don't know where the confusion is happening. What I do know is that I don't want more police to be hired into a department that clearly needs to be massively reformed. We've had, we have the highest per capita deaths of civilians in the country, more than Los Angeles, more than Chicago, more than New York. We've had cases of sexual assault, of sex with minors by police, of all kinds of excessive use of force, of reinstating police, that clearly have been demoted or have been fired. There's a lot of problems in this department, it needs to be massively reformed before we could ever consider hiring more police, especially using public funds to hire more police, very, very needed for transit or for the homeless community, for a lot of other services that I think have been on the chopping block for a long time. And so, again, we want an open process at the council, we want the public to be able to weigh in on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porchas. Heather Hammel? Heather Hammel? I believe it's Miriam Ramirez? Okay, good.
Hello, my name is Maria Cruz. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here because I'm against what they're trying to do around Proposition 104. I'm a bus rider. And transit system is terrible. In many occasions, various persons that are in the car, they arrive late to their work. And clearly, they're, you know, we're not going to wait, and they're also not going to wait for us. And also to tell you that the bus stops are in a terrible state. There's no shelters, they're just in decay, and it's almost like a city doesn't see the need or the pride in its community. I think that safety is, or transit could also be about having better transit, and all the funds for transit is about having better transit, and it's about creating safety, and transit is about creating safety in our city as well. You should seek to have your own funding for police, to hire police, and to ensure that there's training, to ensure there's no abuse when people are stopped or when people are transported in their police cars. And for there to be a serious sanction on these police and for there to be a punishment, so that they're not just enjoying themselves if they're punished, and to protect the civil rights of the people. And I would love for the mayor to actually be here, so he can ride the bus with me sometime, so that he knows the type of improvements and the type of work that transit needs, and he'll be able, he will actually want to improve it. And I invite you also to walk with me one day, and so you can see what our needs are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mark Grenard.
I'm Mark Grenard. I have five simple requests for the police. Robust data collection policies to identify instances of racial profiling, body cameras and policies to ensure their proper use, transparency in use of force incidents, an independent body of citizens to review use of force incidents and recommend policy changes, and disentangling peace. Police from immigration enforcement, reform of operations, order 4.48.
Thank you, sir. Will Gona? Will Gona? Ms. Chanel Poe? Last card, Lou Crowley?
Everything those three people that needed translators said doubled. We need those monies going to transit, not to the police. Eighty percent of your budget already goes there, and we've always been the stepchild. I'd like to point out that I wasn't able to speak on seventy, we went from Arcadia, and you okayed all of those, and I'd like to point out that on the renovations, what about that transit center in the bottom of it? When are you going to renovate that? I'd also like to know, they took the sign down from the I-ten Transit Butcher Facility. Does that mean that you're not going to be doing anything? And could you have staff respond to this specific question? What is the city's plans for the I-ten terminal, since it's your bailiwick? The RPTA Board is meeting tomorrow. As you know, they're not going to have that item on the agenda again. They, our tag yesterday, which is that why aren't we having ticket dispensers at the different transit centers? They're saying that on their memo right now that they don't want to put any of those machines within a quarter mile of a vendor. Well, does that mean that we take them out of all the light rail stops, because all of them are all within a quarter mile of a vendor? I'd like you to consider, why are you penalizing the people that use the bus? That two dollars needs to go. Don't tell me that it's going to stop people from using the bus to get a ticket. Why are you trying to do that? Why are you trying to make it so that they can't get a ticket at the transit facilities? It's been way too long that this two-dollar fine for using the bus has been there. If a person moves into the city or goes to use the bus for the first time, they don't know they're being penalized, and until somebody explains it to them, they're being charged that extra two. Since the people using the bus are usually, like myself, not the most economically advantaged, why do this to them? So I'd also like to point out that I keep on trying to get the rail to be more of a sensitivity. When I look at the March fifteenth one, where RPTA and yourself said, when we do the expansion on Nineteenth Avenue and go into Metro Center, instead of going to a transit facility that we have there and crossing at Dunlap, we're going to go in at Mountain View and make it modal or unmodal by being what? Next to the southbound lane of the freeway access? That's not multimodal. And don't tell me you can't get it across that bridge there, since originally, the I-ten facility right here, to get the rail across that, that was done how? And since that is a A dot facility, and the one there at Dunlap is too, I think we can get them to work with us.
Thank you, Mr. Blue.
We need to put the rail across Dunlap, not at Mountain View, it needs to go to the transit center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That ends public comment. This meeting is adjourned.